Make a comment, please put your name and address in the chat. Please remember that we allot 20 minutes total for public comment and we ask each person to limit their comments to three minutes. I will be timing the comments and I will ring my bell after two and a half minutes to let you know that your time is almost up. And after public comment is over, the chat function will be turned off to allow us all to devote our full attention to the meeting. Tonight, we are going to have a second opportunity for public comment, which takes place after the presentation on hybrid transition indicators. So you can see that's first item under continued business because that will be after the superintendent's report and then after the transition indicators. So if those are things that you're particularly wanting to comment on, you might wait until after those because we will have an additional 20-minute public comment time that will follow the same next again. Okay, so. The piece to be open. If you are planning, hoping to make a comment, great, okay. Bernie Romanowski is there and he would like to comment. Bernie, you can go ahead.
Bernie, you're on mute, I think.
Can we ask him to mute also?
Oh, yeah. Okay, nobody except Bernie, you. And then Bernie, are you there to make a comment?
I am, yes, thank you, Sarah.
Great, thank you. Great, go ahead.
So I'm asking tonight for the school committee to consider a vote for hybrid learning for the K through three group. I think the statewide infection rates are certainly low enough to support this recommendation, as well as increasing concern on our part as parents of two remote learners, kindergartner and second grade, about their ability to meet the educational goals under this model. We've been really struggling with engaging them in the remote learning process despite all the best efforts by the teachers. And just based on the safety factors in our community, I'm hoping the committee will vote tonight for hybrids. Thank you.
Thank you, Bernie. Okay, is there anybody else who would like to make a public comment at the beginning of the meeting? Jake Foster.
Hi, all. I know I forwarded a note, so I won't read the whole thing, but a couple of points. First, on the remote learning. Just want to highlight the fact that, you know, a lot of what we may hear and that I've been hearing and I've been giving input to, to the district on, has as much to do with decisions that are being made about implementation as, as it has to do with, you know, the remote learning through a screen. So just as an example, I mean, and I've shared a little bit of this before, but our elementary school experience as a family here has been a little bit frustrating.
Jake, I'll just interrupt you for a second. If your name is Allison Moore-Smith, could you please mute your mic? We can hear a lot of kitchen noises in the background. Okay, go ahead, Jake.
Thanks. So from the elementary school perspective of our family, it's been frustrating where students are not able to interact with each other. The chat in Zoom and Google Classroom is disabled, so they can't interact. There's been no social time. Yet they're in, there are no small groups work that we've experienced yet, yet they're in kind of independent, isolated breakout rooms multiple times a day. You know, they have had a Go Guardian held over their head as, as a mechanism to avoid using the laptop or anything other than what's explicitly directed by teachers. And it's basically told, you know, they have to sit still in front of the camera so as not to be a distraction, but they do seem to have the option to turn their camera off, which many of them do, and essentially remove themselves from the class. So to me, these are implementation decisions that hopefully aim to control the students rather than engage them. And it'd be great to see a shift to using the technology and strategies in ways that will engage the kids much more. So I hope that, you know, different administrative choices and instructional strategies can remediate that. It's not an issue of the technology or the screen per se, in my, in our opinion. And so, you know, definitely things around social interaction, daily schedule, small group work, student engagement. I don't think those are issues of remote learning as much as they are of implementation. And secondly, my second point is really around the goals and having materials posted so that they are available prior to a meeting. I believe that you have a two, a two-phase approach to your work that allows, that's supposed to allow for input, but without the materials available to review, that's not really possible. So I hope that you're able to make those public for people to review before you finalize them. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Jake. Nicole Collins. Nicole, are you there to make a public comment? One more time, is Nicole Collins there to make a comment?
Is Nicole muted?
Is Nicole trying to talk and she's muted? All right. Well, I don't, I guess maybe Nicole will have an option to come back in the second public comment portion then, because it does, there doesn't appear to be anybody else waiting. And we do have a lot to get to tonight, so I am going to, I guess I will move along.
Sarah, I see her on the camera and I see that mute looks off for her, so I don't know, if she could wave. She's waving. Hi, Nicole. We can't hear you.
Maybe Nicole could put her comment into the chat. She can just type it in, then they can have it in the record. Is she giving us a thumbs up?
I'm trying to mute unmute her without success here.
Okay.
I think she has control over it.
Yeah.
All right. So, okay. So I think maybe we will just move on and maybe she will get that sorted out, or we'll just leave that open for a minute so that Nicole can maybe put her comment into the chat.
Sure.
Okay. All right. So next item on the agenda, actually, I'd love to start with Lucas's student report if he's there.
Yep, I'm here.
Yay!
Welcome back, Lucas.
Thank you. It's kind of wild. So is there like anything that you guys want me to talk about specifically, or?
How's it going? How's remote learning is going?
Yeah.
Well, okay, so personally, you know, remote learning has been like an interesting experience, you know, like all students, like we all haven't experienced this before. And so I feel like for the most part, a lot of students found it to be challenging, especially for like the first two weeks of school. And it's kind of like expected, right? But I feel like, you know, beginning the third week of school, students are starting to kind of get in the flow and are getting used to this new form. See, that's all I have to say about that. In terms of like, actually like during class, I've noticed that the majority of students seem to be less willing to participate or engage in like class discussions. And you know, that could be because of a variety of reasons, right? Maybe students find it a little awkward, right, to talk from all their classmates over Zoom. They might feel a little anxious, right, because when you're on a Zoom call, everyone's paying attention to you, right? Compare that to, you know, in the classroom normally when, you know, there's people that are bound to not be fully paying attention to you, but you know, over Zoom, it kind of ensures that, you know, your voice is the only thing that people are hearing. So there's that element of anxiety, I think, that is contributing to that. In terms of like in-between class, you know, we have 10-minute breaks, which are definitely helpful. I have heard that some students are complaining that, you know, a few of their teachers are going like two to three minutes over, over time. And so, you know, that 10-minute break now becomes shorter. And in terms of like clear things, sometimes students are, you know, waiting in the waiting room and then the teacher might not see them, so they end up waiting for like five to 10 minutes until they're like finally let in by the teacher. But by then, you know, class has already started, so they're probably, they've probably already missed out on a couple of things. And yeah, that's pretty much everything I have to say.
Lucas, do you participate in any sports or clubs that have started up?
Yeah, so for sports, I play tennis, which is a sport that hasn't started yet. In terms of clubs, I'm pretty engaged in a lot of clubs. I actually run our school's pre-med club. I'm a part of math team, which I don't know if, I don't know if that's starting right now, but I'm also part of our school's STEM club and science team, which has recently merged together into one kind of like student organization.
Great. Does anybody else have questions for Lucas?
I do. Hi, Lucas, welcome back. It's Shannon. I was just wondering how you're feeling about the actual academic piece of it and how that's being delivered? Are you feeling like you're challenged? Are you feeling like, you know, you can get to the teachers if you need to? How were you feeling about the actual like meat of, of the delivery?
Felt pretty good, honestly. Like in terms of testing, I can talk about testing a little bit. Testing has been pretty interesting. I think it's been pretty, been pretty solid so far. However, I can definitely see like, foresee potential problems that students will have with regard to testing, especially because, and not all teachers, but some teachers are not, you know, giving their students the full block to do, to take a test like they normally would if we were, you know, in school. So like, some of the, some of the teachers that I have for my classes are dedicating like 30 minutes to taking the test and like five minutes afterward to uploading like their response or something. And so, you know, we're not like given the whole block to taste, to take a test. And so I think that like that can definitely be an issue that some students will have. Yeah, in terms of like student-teacher communication, I feel like that's, you know, really solid. I think that students can, if they need to, they can easily access and communicate with their teachers, whether that be during U block, you know, sometimes during lunch even. Yeah.
Thank you for sharing that with us.
No problem.
Thanks, Lucas. All right. Anyone else have questions for Lucas? Okay, I will start us off with the chairman's report. So again, welcome to everyone who's joining us for our virtual meeting tonight. We have almost finished three weeks of remote learning and it is the first meeting of the new month, so as promised, we will be discussing the first phase of a move to potential hybrid learning tonight. We've had a lot of feedback over the last three weeks. There's been some mail. Some people are feeling like they're getting into a really good groove and they are not wanting us to make any changes. Some people are having a really hard time with remote learning and would like us to change everything. I want to acknowledge that this is really hard for families and people are working really hard and for the most part, everybody's really trying to make this work together. And it's great to get the feedback because we need to know what's going on and we want to help everybody make this a success. And we also know that this challenge is especially great for parents with multiple children in elementary school. That seems to be the most challenging situation. But I do want to thank everyone for sharing your experiences honestly with, with your teachers and your principals and with us. I know the administrators plan to continue to monitor and adjust the program as we move forward to ease the burden on everybody and make it as good as we can for the kids. And we've been hearing a lot from families with younger children, but of course, we realize that families of middle and high school students have concerns too. I happen to have a high school student. So while remote learning generally seems more accessible for older students and it allows us to present our full academic program, which is important at Manchester Essex, we want to make sure that we focus on all these kids and their social and emotional needs as well. Our whole community, students, parents, teachers, administrators, and the school committee is really working together to try to identify and solve the problems. So I want to thank everybody for continuing to participate by attending our meeting tonight. And also, I want to thank everyone advanced for remembering to be kind and respectful when you're making comments during the meeting and also to each other outside of the meeting. So thank you all very much. And now we will move on with our consent agenda. So we have some more.
One correction to the consent agenda. You were looking at minutes from 9:01, not 9:15. 9:15 is owed next time.
Okay.
Motion to approve?
I'll second, Erdman.
Great, I need to do a roll call vote, so Eric?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Good, and I'm a yes, so the consent agenda passes. And next, some subcommittee reports. It looks like no facilities report, is there anything? Did anybody go on the tour of the memorial school?
I think Christina had three people.
I did. Matt and I did, we had our own semi-private.
Would you care to share?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. First of all, it was really weird to be in a building without any kids, so I will say that right out of the gate. But they have done a phenomenal job, not only in just building, the building, but the care to all the details and basically the daily care that goes in to having people in the building. And the extent that WT Rich and all of their subs clean and make sure everything is ready to go the next morning, along with our facilities people, it's just an incredible job. And the classrooms look really great, they'll look even better with kids in them. And the teachers, you can see, have put their, you know, kind of personal touches in all the rooms, so that's kind of nice to see. It's just, it's fabulous. It's terrific. So it was really a great, great thing to see after, you know, all that work.
Awesome. Yeah. Matt, did you have anything you wanted to say about it?
Yeah, no, just, I was, I was impressed by like a lot of the finishes that are in the school. There's some of the stuff you take for granted, I thought the lighting was, was great, not too harsh, not like there's just like this really bad overhead fluorescent lights. The flooring was unique, it just wasn't that standard, like VCT tile. Just some really, really thoughtful choices on the finishes that make it a much more kind of pleasant space.
Awesome. Well, thank you to Shannon and Annie for being on elementary facilities and a little shout out to Caroline Weld, who's no longer with us on school committee, but worked very hard on that committee to get it all together.
And she's on the call.
Yay! I didn't even know that when I said that. Finance committee, is there a, is there a finance committee report?
No.
Okay.
We have a bunch of meetings scheduled, though. We're going to try to go in, I know we have like maybe every, was it two weeks, Annie? Every three weeks kind of thing?
Yeah.
Yeah. So since we've all last met, we haven't had a meeting, but I believe our next one is for October 9th. So.
Friday morning.
Yep.
Oh, God, really?
Yep, yep. Surprise!
All right.
Annie, I'll send the invite.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then we do transportation policy to review.
Hey, everyone. Yep, this is Eric. So we did meet briefly yesterday, Teresa, Pam, Abby and myself. And any of those three, please feel free to jump in if I'm not saying this correctly. We reviewed the current policy. There is a part of the policy that notes that students living, so we're required to provide transportation for students living within two miles of school. There is a part of the policy that states that students living within a 1.5, five-mile radius may have access to transportation. So for now, given the current circumstances, given the distance and requirements, we're recommending that we stick to the two miles with the potential for reevaluating that down the line a little bit once we get back up and running in school. So again, feel free to jump in if I didn't report any of that correctly, but that was kind of what we got out of our meeting, I think.
Yeah, all I'll add is that Eric was a great summary. I think what we initially thought was that the whole policy may have needed a revision, but when we looked closely at it, the way the language is written, it is that children may have access to a fee-for-service ride. So the language of root practicality and cost in this case would allow us not to invoke that clause and just stick to the letter of the law and go with two miles. The intent behind this isn't to discontinue service permanently, but to increase the capacity on the buses to meet the social distancing and allow for minimizing any additional cost to transportation once we start to move to hybrid. So it's more of an informational for the committee, as long as we're all in agreement on the interpretation of the language, I think we can just move forward.
Okay. Any other school committee comment?
I have questions once we move the question.
I don't think we have to have a, we don't have to vote on anything.
We don't? Why?
Because the language says that children may have access to transportation and we're just saying that this year they won't.
So in the packet, we have a strike through.
Right, that was one of the things that we looked at yesterday and we realized we don't need to strike the language, we just need to exercise our right not to offer. The committee would like to vote in support of exercising our right not to offer fee-for-service for students, that's certainly your purview. But I think the committee has the language here to make that decision.
So we don't have to change it and then change it back, so this just?
Correct.
Okay, I'm comfortable with that.
Okay. Any other comments on the transportation policy?
Nope, this is really helpful, so we can move this piece of the puzzle forward.
Just one question.
Can you tonight stop some?
Pam? So implementation, you know, this is a change in practice. So are we, how are we communicating this out should we decide to go with hybrid later in the meeting?
It will go out as soon as tomorrow, if not Thursday, in a form of registration with the note that we are accepting registrations for people two miles and beyond.
I sympathize with people who have been used to shaking the bus and maybe won't because they live in that, within that half-mile differentiation zone. I was there, I did not have a bus to get to elementary school and had to drive or walk my children, even though it was far, but not far enough for a bus. So I totally understand and empathize with people who struggle with this, but we, we need to provide social distancing on the buses, so we are just, we have to be really careful with what we are going to be able to offer this year. Okay, so can we move on from that? Yes. Negotiations, we haven't had any formal negotiations, but we have been meeting regularly with the leadership in a variety of meetings. Ken, did you want to chime in on anything about negotiations?
No, I guess I would just say, Sarah, we've got a range, much like there's been a range of responses from the parents, there's been a range of topics that came up in talking with the, with the representatives. Again, much like you said, everybody is, I feel, putting in their best effort, working hard and adapting to deliver on the model that, the remote learning, getting up to speed on that as we go. We spent a bit of time touching on kind of staging up for the discussion, which is really around the elementary hybrid, which is coming up next. And there was a presentation, just for people's reference, August 10th, 2020, on the MERSD website is, I think, the reopening plan for elementary. And we just use that as a basis because that's what's published, that's what we've built things around, and that's really the basis for some of the discussions as we go forward. So I felt it was, again, off to a good start. And we just got a, one thing that did come up a little bit is the difficulty of with obtaining additional substitutes. We're seeing some items around that that I'm not really qualified to get into, just in the sense of, for some areas we're recruiting, there is not the availability of substitutes or full-time teachers that we've seen before. So again, it's just emphasizing the importance of why we need to keep everybody together and keep moving this forward. So more discussions to come, but overall theme is very problem-solving and working together creatively, which is what we need.
Yeah, I agree. All right, Pam, I turn it over to you for the superintendent's report.
Okay. I'm going to be direct and to the point, I hope. Oh, and I hope my document comes up. Here we go. Okay, I'm also going to go with a call to the bullpen for a little bit of more in-depth information on a couple of topics that we'll cover. Just want to start first with feedback on school opening and the remote learning. I very much echo Sarah's comments. I think it has been, obviously, it was very exciting. I felt we got off to a really strong start. That being said, the strong start also came with frustrations for many people and, you know, we do appreciate hearing what they are, even though they may not always have immediate solutions. We do hear it, it is important for us to process on it. And what we look for is multiple hits. So if one person's having trouble with the schedule, that's a one-off, but if 50 people are having trouble with the schedule, it's an area for revision and a deeper look. So as each of the principals, they did a fantastic job, they hosted a series of coffee talks with members of their school community, just to hear how people were feeling about how things were going. And quite honestly, there were common themes regardless of level, and then some, some things particular to each grade level. So I would say across the board, we, I think we accomplished what we set out to do in building the model, based on the feedback that we got from the spring of last year, which was at all grade levels, and I was able to hear at least one session at each, and then principals provided me some notes. Good structure, rigorous program, the teachers are really putting their all into it, fantastic job, high level of communication, the lessons are well-developed for the remote environment, and teachers are very available to kids. And it feels like it has the pulse and the rigor and the length of a school day. So on the flip side of that, I think what we learned at the elementary level is that the length of the day in person isn't necessarily translating well for everyone in the online environment. And Sarah, like you, we've heard it's going great for us, we're really making it work, we like it, and we've heard, I don't know how we're going to make it another week with this, it's really just too much for us to juggle. So I think we find ourselves in that position of trying to balance needs at both ends of the spectrum while still maintaining the program delivery that we'd like to. I think where we go tonight is going to determine how we're going to attack dealing with that issue, because there are inherent schedule changes in, that will come as part of the hybrid model. If we aren't going toward that in a timely way, then we will have to make adjustments to what we're doing right now. But we've been trying to hopefully marry those two changes together, so we don't keep upheaving systems that get put in place, because I think we all know, even though we may not love a schedule, once you adapt to it, having to make another change can be equally, equally disruptive. So within that, we'll be looking at aligning the schedule between grade levels and creating maybe, if we can, a universal lunch. I would just say, what I've learned, what I know about scheduling is, this isn't a purposeful action to create disharmony between the grade levels. It's typically designed in order to put certain things in in terms of services or pull-out work or prep time or things that we have to do to make the universal school schedule run, which clearly isn't translating well to home and is felt less when they're in the building. So we're going to take a look at those items, like I said, either in ongoing remote or as we address the hybrid. Amount of screen time was also hit on at the elementary and the high school. I didn't really see it in the notes for middle school, but I'm sure it's a concern for some there as well. And just, how do you manage the necessity for delivering instruction? And just, how do you manage the necessity for delivering instruction in the length of the day, but building in enough breaks so the kids are not glued to that screen all day long? And then, again, another common concern that's come up are the technology glitches with, with Zoom and Chromebooks and Zoom management, I think Lucas mentioned, everything from kids getting hung up in the weight room to, I can't use my Bluetooth headsets with my Chromebook, so I'm going to kick it to Julie and Avi momentarily to give us a little bit of an update of what, what they've been working on with the help desk. We've been really fortunate to bring on some contracted service to formulate a help, a help desk dedicated to folks who are at home, teachers, parents and students. So there is just-in-time assistance for them, but some people have some persistent problems that are clearly frustrating for them, and while there are workarounds, there may not be immediate solutions. So let's put a pin in that just for a second, and we will come back to it. I think engagement was really a nice highlight to see at the middle school, parents were feeling that their kids were engaged and that the curriculum could even move faster. So I think that was, in that set of notes, the one that I, seems to be really hitting the just-right stride at the secondary. And then at the high school, again, not a lot of concern with the, with the rigor, the structure and the length of the day, screen time in general, because I think we're dealing with kids who are a little bit more independent in their off-school hours, you know, are also relying pretty heavily on, on tech to connect with, with friends, and perhaps engage in some past times hobbies, Netflix, whatever it is, screen time is prominent in their lives. So how can we work to maybe create more academic opportunities that involve more traditional tasks? Student engagement is something that we, parents are hoping we will help them keep an eye on. And then the upperclassman college process, so 11th and 12th graders, that's something that's really a big part of their world and just, I, I saw in the notes, some concern from parents that we don't lose that in this remote world, that the level of assistance that's been there for families, particularly families who are going through it for the first time, really is, we are really over-communicating around that so people don't get lost in the shuffle. And then just something that I don't think is necessarily particular to remote learning, an ongoing conversation we've had for years, which is mental health. These conditions, obviously, will have a different impact on it than when we're in person, but something that really came across as an ask that we, we helped keep an eye on. And I know there are things being done to address each of these issues, and when Trish gives us the update on athletics, she can also probably clue us in a little bit on, on the work she is doing there. So before we transition into a discussion about hybrid, if I could just ask Avi and Julie to maybe share with the group as part of the overall report, how you've been managing the help desk, what you've seen from it, and anything that would be helpful for us to know going forward in terms of defining what these, what these glitches are that we're experiencing.
Sure. Hi Pam, it's Julie and everyone.
Hi.
Hi.
And I can throw up your slides.
Well, great, I was just going to ask if you...
Yep.
That's great. So what we wanted to do was just give an overview of how we, you know, got started with our remote learning technology for the fall, and Avi and I will probably tag-team a lot of this conversation because we've been working very closely on all components, technology. So just to give a refresher for all families listening, we have a K to 2 technology structure around iPads for our lowest element, our youngest elementary students, and we're using Zoom and CSO, Zoom as a communication platform and CSO as an instructional platform, so that we're able to connect with families, send things home and get things back. In the spring, if you remember, we were sending things home via parent email, and we know that that was super labor-intensive for families, so we wanted to change that, and we've started to work with CSO for the fall, and we're finding that to be very supportive of our work. In grades three through 12, we're using Chromebooks in the district, but at the high school, we have a BYOD, and I'll talk about that in a quick minute. But for three through five, our Chromebooks, we're also using Zoom, so we're using Zoom throughout the district as a communication structure, and Google Classroom, which we've been using for our instructional delivery in terms of getting materials and coursework to and from home. Grade six through, oh, I do have that, six through 12 technology, we have the Chromebooks at the middle school and a BYOD, which is a bring-your-own-device format for the high school. And again, across those grade levels, we are working with Zoom and Google Classroom. So we've been watching this play out across the K to 12 spectrum and taking a look through the parent help desk, as well as through getting a bird's-eye view into the classroom on how this is working from the teacher perspective, and hearing from parents on the student's perspective, and then working with the help desk to try to facilitate workarounds for some of the technology glitches that we've noticed come up. So Avi, do you want to jump in here and explain a little of our tech support infrastructure? Okay.
Yeah, yeah, this is a little bit about the tech support infrastructure that we have, and it's basically an external and internal model. So for the external side is parents and students, and that's where the help desk has been working. And this is just a really another important plug, to please call the help desk, really helps us, they track every ticket, and Julie and I are able to review every ticket. So all the calls that go through there, once they're there, we know about them and we can keep an eye on them, look for trends, et cetera. So, you know, we have the hours here, you have the email address that's available for sending something in via email, you can also call, and, you know, we'll talk a little bit about some of the feedback later, but from what we're hearing, they're generally available with the calls that have come in, and tickets starting to, I'd say, certainly much lower than the initial days, you know, they're available and returning calls quickly for people who do have to leave a message. And then on the internal side, that's where we have, you know, our internal help team. It's now been bumped up to four FTE with use of the contract that we're using, that we talked about through Access Computer Networks. We have our two internal tech folks, the Quiet Text, Stephen John, as well as a tech integrator at the middle school, high school, who's certainly able to see the tickets and help out for certain things, you know, that, you know, teachers can need in real time. Plus, we have one dedicated FTE, full-time equivalent, that's the jargon, for, for internal help desk. And one of the benefits is that it really allows us to have every school covered with building-based support. So we could just, so just some quick statistics for those who are wondering what's coming through, you know, through last Friday, 200-plus tickets coming through. We saw quite a few in the first week, you know, just on the five school days there from the first week, one, one full cycle of a week, it was about 30 tickets per day coming in. So a huge influx initially as things were getting going, it's really to be expected, but really by the second week, that had diminished significantly. And it's pretty stable in the past week, down to about six tickets, new tickets per day. But, you know, you can see that there really was a big ramp-up phase, and, you know, some of the issues are being resolved with things like FAQ documents that they're able to put together as they see trends. And so I know that there's a gentleman, Eric, who, if you're on the call tonight, you've called the help desk, I'm sure you've worked with him, we've heard really favorable reviews of his ability to work with folks, you know, there's certain things that he's, you know, still, you know, working out, and we'll talk about some of the issues that are still a challenge that we were aware of, we're working through. And I'm sure he's been pretty straightforward with parents from what he's told me about the things he's able to do, and sometimes things that we're not, you know, quite able to deal with just yet. But the FAQ documents really do take the most common things that we're seeing and provide good information for parents, he's able to send them out, but he's also able to walk people through them on the phone and go through it together. You know, like I said, with tickets going down to about six new tickets per day, same-day communications really is the norm to be expected at this point if you put a ticket in it. It really was happening initially as well, but I would encourage you to call. And then internal tickets, before we just move forward, you know, going to that, we're still getting tons of tickets that way, you know, we have had a large hardware and software rollout in the past year. So there's a whole lot of issues, I know if we have any teachers on the line, they're familiar with all the new things that have come with rolling out new devices and new software platforms, and so that creates a whole load of tickets as well. And thankfully, having more people to manage that has helped us, but it's still, I know the, the tech team is working overtime to try to keep up to date and help people in real time. And then, you know, there's some of the other issues that we see, you know, for example, configurations and settings, how do I do this differently? I'd like to be able to do this, you know, the more teachers are getting into how they're delivering remote instruction, sometimes there's, you know, tickets related to how to fine-tune things. And, and then just the routine onsite issues that we've always had, which always require some FTE. Moving along, so some of the biggest things that we've seen, the most common that we've seen, and I know we were talking about this during student review tonight, is just difficulty logging onto Zoom or staying on. There's, what we're seeing with all of these issues, that there, there are a host of different types of factors that can be there, it's not typically one specific issue that might be causing something. So with regard to logging on or sometimes staying on Zoom, sometimes it can be a traffic issue that can lead to people getting bumped out, you might have had an experience where you're on a call and suddenly you get dropped. Sometimes there's issues related to the login process, I know certainly that was more common in the initial week or so. If you're using multiple devices with Zoom, you can have an issue where Zoom, when you log in, tries to figure out who you are and what account you're logging in through, and it does have a little bit of a reconciliation, it does on the backend, and sometimes it can require a repeat login or a log out and a, another login to convince Zoom that you are that same person. And similarly, because we, students typically go through the Google Suite at the three through 12 level, you need to log in through Google, and sometimes there's just, again, an extra step that can be required, sometimes it can be a little bit finicky. And so more than not, we're seeing that that's typically an issue with Zoom. The help desk does have a protocol for that, and unfortunately, sometimes it can require multiple logins, which can be frustrating for sure, we're aware of that. That's a great thing, if you just stay on the line with the help desk person, he's walked people through it, if, if you're feeling like it's not working, and that's usually something that can be resolved. On the area of audio and video lags and glitches, that's been one that's been a little more challenging, and it's really multifactorial in terms of the types of things that can lead to it being an issue. First and foremost, you know, I think if we all think back to two or three years ago, video and audio over the internet, you know, we have much higher expectations these days, and so internet connectivity alone is a major factor all the time. And that can be bandwidth coming into your house, it can be, you know, when I look at the tickets in detail, I see several of them related to distance, to the routers, the number of devices that are running in a home, non-school uses that might be happening in a house, related to say, you know, video streaming, we have parents who are at home doing their own work, you know, which is understandable and necessary, and so sometimes that can really put a tax on the internet. Sometimes it can be a device-related issue, and so that's where you have issues around CPU, which is a central processing unit that basically that, the chip, so to speak, or the memory being overtaxed by the heavy usages of Zoom. And we've seen it with Chromebooks quite a bit, but not only with Chromebooks, we've seen it with people using their own personal devices, we've seen it with laptops, so it's really not related to just one type of device from what we're seeing when we look at the tickets, although certainly with Chromebooks being the predominant device that is being used, we are seeing it there. We've had some people who've said that when they moved off a Chromebook, it's been better in some cases, but what we're seeing is that between some of the home networking adjustments, continual upgrades that we're seeing with the software, both from Zoom and from Chromebooks, sorry, from Chromebooks, from Google, Google and Zoom both putting out continuous updates. What, you know, what we're seeing is that some of these issues are, you know, happening to districts across the state and I'm sure across the country. These two, you know, solutions are probably the most common that are in play for school districts that are using remote video and audio technology. And so these companies really are both moving very aggressively, what we're seeing is that they are continuously looking at their own tickets, continuously pushing out updates, I think in the past two or three weeks, both companies have pushed out two or three, I believe there's another update coming out from Chrome today. So this is just one of those things that just hopefully continues to improve, but it's kind of a work in progress. Obviously, you know, in the past, we tend to associate video as being one of the biggest usages of bandwidth and potential resource taxation. But what we're finding is that through a lot of the research that the help desk is doing to kind of replicate problems on their end, that actually audio over the internet, if you're using internet audio, that can be really, really consuming as well. And so just like we do with the school committee here, where we are trying to mute all devices except for when we need it, that makes a difference as well. We've seen other things like the more, you know, when teachers are in screen sharing mode, it can also decrease the taxation from other uses as well. So the help desk is really getting into it, they're also working with parents about how to clear cache, because that can, you know, lead to resource taxation. And, and again, I think the takeaway here is that there are really just a whole lot of different types of solutions that can help, but ultimately, you know, we are continuing to just look at the tickets and do our best to update our practices, update our FAQ, and continue to adapt and improve as we go. And then the last one, just on internet access alone, there are a small number of families who have routinely unreliable internet access. We have been offering prepaid hotspots, that was something we rolled out in the spring, we've had a few more takers, and that's something that's still available for folks who cannot get, for example, like a Comcast connection. It is subject to wireless availability in your house, so we have two different carriers that we're working with, and so that can help a little bit as well. But again, we're aware of the issues, we know for folks who are, you know, sometimes having challenges, it can be very frustrating. I can assure you that we've got the entire tech team looking at these issues and kind of continuing to look at tickets on a daily basis, we're having, you know, group calls every other day to say, you know, what's the newest, what have we been learning, what can we adapt? And I know, for example, the FAQ document continues to evolve, it's probably on version six or something like that. So that gives you a, you know, a, I think, an overview of some of the things that we've been hearing most about. And again, I just want to reiterate, please do continue to call the help desk, that's what they're there for, and the more we hear from you, the more we can continue to refine our issues and, and see what's going on. The only other thing I would say, going back to the prior slide real quickly, in terms of the volume of tickets, we actually, at the last time I looked, after about two and a half weeks, the difficulty related to logging on and staying on the Zoom was a factor higher than audio and video lag and glitches. So although those issues I think can be more confounding when they're, when they're, when you're having trouble, and the Zoom logging on has been more successful for getting onto the system, I will say that the number of tickets that we're seeing is definitely, definitely a lot higher for the logging onto Zoom issues than it is for any of the CPU-type of issues that we're seeing, which I think we're in the single percentage points, you know, if we extrapolate, 2% to 5% of all, of students might have reported an issue on that. So that's the overview, and if we could just throw up the, the call number and the email one last time, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Avi, I have a quick question. What are we doing for people who are like repeat callers and have gone through all of the processes and all of the protocols but are still having problems? What are we doing for those students and those families? Are we swapping out computers or, you know, if they continue to have the same issue despite going through all of the procedures that are laid out?
Yeah, we have swapped out a few devices in, in a few cases, and to the extent that people have a home device, there have been some people who prefer to go that route. And, you know, I think the best we can do is continue to monitor as the updates are continuing to happen, to check back in with those families and see, and we've heard a couple of them say to us, you know, based on some of the software pushes that these companies, that Zoom and Google are pushing out, I'm going to check back in in about, you know, two weeks to see whether they, they'd like to get back onto, you know, the school-issued device.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
In terms of the logging onto Zoom, is it, is it one individual using multiple devices? Or is it, I am using my, my laptop or my Chromebook and I'm trying to be visible as a, you know, a talking head and I'm trying to share my work?
I think what's great is that everybody...
I think what's great is that everybody's issue, what's not great, it's not great. It's what is, we're in a position where there's somebody to talk everybody through their individual need. So there's no one particular scenario that keeps playing over and over, other than the perceived Chromebook Zoom glitch. So I guess the good news is we don't have to problem solve because we have a crack team that is daily, real-time problem solving to the best of their ability for people.
Anyone else have questions for Avi and Julie about the tech?
I have a quick question. It's Teresa. I think this is mainly for Julie. If you could just speak to the why on the Bluetooth disabling and whether that's going to be revisited or not. It's come up on multiple occasions in my experience here.
In your personal experience in terms of Bluetooth?
Well, personal and hearing from other people, people wanting to know why they can't. So for instance, it said, you know, make sure you have headphones of some sort. And some people purchased Bluetooth things, not realizing it wouldn't be an option. So if you could just explain to us why we can't have Bluetooth enabled on the devices, that would help.
The only problem that, while we're trying to troubleshoot a few different things, and what we're hoping is some of the updates that we'll see come out of Chrome will support the use of additional technologies like Bluetooth. What we're finding is that it's not always as compatible as it seems. And so each individual Bluetooth device works differently depending on the technology that you're using. For instance, if you're using an iPhone and you have Apple earbuds, it's a general compatibility that is not a crossover. So we're seeing a lot of different challenges and crossovers around Bluetooth. And we're just trying to factor in and factor out some of those, you know, connection issues. We do know, though, that connecting to Bluetooth isn't as easy as it seems. And so we're trying to troubleshoot that. And one of the big updates that we're hoping to see come out of this new Chrome update is a distinctive change within the audio infrastructure. So we're all kind of waiting with bated breath to see how that rollout occurs when it gets pushed through, to figure out if it's going to solve that problem for everybody. And we're hoping that it does.
Okay. So it's not universally disabled at this point on the Chromebooks? Or you're still troubleshooting to enable it?
We're still troubleshooting to enable it.
Got it. Thank you. That helps.
Yeah. We want to make this as easy as we can for people, not shut things off for people, if that makes sense.
I understand. Thank you.
So I have another question. This is Annie. Should we decide to go hybrid? In you have students in the classroom and students at home, are you reducing the load that's on Zoom meetings with the kids in the classroom? And will that help at all?
Potentially, yes. Yes.
Okay.
All right. Yeah. All right. Anything else on tech? Because we've got a lot to get through. And I'd like to throw it to Trish, because I know athletics is off to a good start. We spent a lot of time on it. And I think some of what athletics is doing is evolving. And she was going to give us a little bit of an update on where we are with the crowds and things like that.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank Lucas for talking earlier this evening. He's such an authentic voice for the high school, and I really appreciate it. And I'm really glad to hear that there's some student-teacher communication that's going well. I think that there's always adjustments going back to school in terms of kids feeling comfortable being in their classroom and like speaking out and that building of community. And we are only in week three, but hopefully that will become more, I don't know, kids will feel more comfortable going forward. And then finally, I think with the testing, I think, I know that today, and I'm not sure if this was talking about this or not, but the AP teachers met today because the AP format had changed last week into this 30-minute testing window with time to upload. And it was kind of a different format for them, and they're trying to figure that out. So, but either way, I think he gave me great points to talk to the faculty about, and I really appreciate it. Athletics, it's going really well. I really need to commend the coaches and the student athletes for really following the guidelines and everything that they're doing. One caution I would throw out there, I would notice in younger students, students that aren't on athletic teams, out on Highland Field without masks, like yesterday during the early release sometime, and at various other times. And we just want to remind everybody that when you're on school property, a mask is required. And so we just don't want any confusion between, you know, kids just kind of playing and being kids, which is awesome, in our athletic program. And I, one thing that's come up is the idea of spectators. And we know there's a real desire for there to be more spectators at our competitions. And that is something we're looking to implement over maybe next week, or the following week. We're meeting with the K Family Principals and ADs this week, and we hope to implement a change in that, because what we found is that there's varying kind of rules from school to school. Although the K Family all said, no spectators, what we learned over the last week is that not every school is enforcing that to the same level that we have been. So we're looking for ways to make it more accommodating to our parents to be able to see their own children on the field. And the last thing I actually want to talk about was bringing some of our, different from athletics, but bringing some of our high-needs kids back into school. We have some students who are involved with outside agencies or have missed a significant number of days in a row that we consider high risk. We have really strong protocols in place at the high school with the Dean of Students, Guidance Counselors, Teachers, Academic Center, Special Education, really communicating on a regular basis. And this coming week, we'll see a few of our really identified high-needs, regular ed students, beyond the special ed students that are in school, coming in one or two days a week to assure that they are on track and that they remain engaged with our program.
Awesome. Thank you. So that's a little bit of where we are. Some of the things that we're working on, how we're working to address the problems that we're seeing crop up. So if we're comfortable with that kind of synopsis of the first three weeks, we can transition to discussion about where we want to be in the following three weeks, if everyone's ready to do that. So without further ado, I think I come to you tonight to recommend that we begin making the transition to hybrid at the elementary level, targeting first K2 with the ambitious delivery of the week of the 19th of October, and to follow that up with 3.5 the following week of October 26th. Seeing that all this is tentative to a certain degree on maintaining current conditions, and knowing that if, you know, we aren't able to secure the appropriate level of staff by the 19th, that we could always bump out one more week, but with all effort going into beginning with our K2 kids on, it would be October 20th. I would bump out. I also recommend that we continue forward with remote learning and bringing kids onto campus for ongoing social-emotional learning opportunities, community-building opportunities, clubs and activities, as we are now gearing up to do. I know both Tricia and Joanne have days in October planned. They're probably putting a little bit more detail on it before it's released to the parents and students to bring kids onto campus. And they're both working to identify cohorts of students that should be coming in to meet with counseling staff per the DESE guidance on servicing high-need students. So I would say this should be our next two-month timeline, if possible. We do know that if, when we prepare to go to hybrid at the secondary, it's a different conversation than the one at the elementary. If you recall back to the August 11th meeting, the intricacies of the schedule are a little bit different at the secondary in terms of impact on the program with what we decide on scheduling. So I'd say we put a pin in that for right now and focus all of our efforts on trying to get our youngest kids back first. We have everything we need on paper to make the transition. You approved a hybrid model this summer as part of our reopening planning. If you recall, we prepared three plans, one for full in-person that just wouldn't work because of our space. We had a full hybrid model ready to go, and the skeleton of which is down below. And then we had the full remote learning. And we talked a lot about how hybrid and remote worked together, because what we would be trying to accomplish with hybrid is keeping kids who are in school connected to kids who are at home and creating a provision for people who just were not ready or able. We do have a lot of high-risk students who are unable to return to school at this time. It's not even a choice issue. And we wanted to give them full opportunity to be part of a traditional class, have a teacher, and participate with their peers for a sense of community and belonging. So I think we're ready to implement that model or a variation of that schedule within the model within the next couple of weeks. What's on the screen below is a sample of what we may agree to or be discussing as a potential for implementation, at least in the first phase. And I would say, everything we're doing can be scaled up eventually. So if we start with a half-day, the goal would be to build to a full day. If we start with a full day, two days a week, the goal would be to build to three days a week or a full week. So nothing is going to be put in place and just left. We're going to continue to tend it, work on it, and see where there's opportunities for growth and development. But we've taken the first step. We've developed the remote component. People have come back into the building. Employees have come back into the building. Teachers are doing a great job. They're getting comfortable in their surroundings. This is going to be difficult, because just like families are getting used to the schedule, teachers are still troubleshooting and trying to get used to the schedule. So now we're going to ask them to take another step forward and prepare to receive students. So the sample schedule is below, just as a point of reference for right now. If we were to go with a half-day, the, it would be 8:25 to 12 with 12 to 1:15 travel time, and then a resumption with all students remote in the afternoon. Students will be divided, as we talked about this summer, into two cohorts. We're calling them green and white for our school colors. Green cohort would be coming to school in the mornings on Tuesday and Wednesday, or for the full day on Tuesday and Wednesday, with white cohort participating from at home. And on Thursday and Friday, white cohort would be at school with the green cohort at home. So we don't need to get too locked into the schedule. This is still part of our ongoing discussions and negotiation, but this will be resolved by next Wednesday for implementation the week of the 19th. Just a quick review, we don't really need to go too deep into it, but the hybrid really tries to create an environment, and this is a heavy lift. No one, no one doubts that. And everyone is going to do their best to make it work to the best of their ability. But we're going to try and connect the kids at home to the kids at school. So the core instruction will be delivered by the teacher. The lesson would be designed to be delivered remotely. And then it would be adapted to the students that would be present in the classroom. So there will be a lot of juggling involved, but I know our very capable staff is up to the task. And if they are finding areas where they can make recommendations to improve how we're doing it or change how we're doing it along the way to the benefit of the students, I know they will make those recommendations. So the fast timeline would be, we're going to put out, I'm sorry, that should be fourth through fifth. We will be putting out a notice to families should be given the authority to go forward tonight, to see if they are going to be attending in hybrid and whether or not they'll need transportation. Remember, remote only will always be an option. And then next week, the 14th and the 15th, this should be the fourth, I'm sorry, the seventh through the 14th. Sorry for that typo there. The 14th and 15th, so next week, post-long weekend, we'll provide notice to families on what cohort they'd be placed in. And then October 20th, if all goes as planned, we'll return the first cohort of K2 students to school, with the second cohort coming in on the 22nd, and then try to gear up for the week of October 26th. We may need to add another SC meeting in there as a checkpoint. That's just up for consideration, not necessarily having to do that. And this is just old. Sorry, I was rushing to get this done on time, and I missed a couple of pieces. Again, just want to reiterate to families that there is an option to participate in the hybrid or stay remote only and participate remotely in the hybrid, meaning you're still stay part of the same class that you were in, and participate right along from home. You just don't attend on the days when your cohort comes into school. And there's the independent remote option that still is out there and available for folks, if this just is not what they are looking for in terms of the schedule, the synchronicity. And we can still make that available to people if they'd like to go out on their own with that. So again, I'll just go back to, you know, the point of what we're at tonight is, I think we're ready to go forward. I'll state our challenge is going to continue to be, and we can talk about this a little bit more when we talk about the indicators, staffing is still our biggest challenge. It's our biggest financial challenge, but it's really just a resource challenge. We're going to be looking to place 10 TAs, five monitors, two teachers and a nurse within the next couple of weeks. We've had ads up for almost a week now with scant response, but we are beating the bush and going anywhere we can to find, to find folks. And if we can't, we will try to figure out a way to get it done with the hands that we have. Of those TAs, it's probably worth noting that five are replacement, replacements for retirements or resignations, and five would be the new additions to just provide extra support in building substitutes. So that's where we are. And I'm happy to take questions on our, on my thinking about where we are and where I think we can, where we think we can be.
Pam, can you just quickly go through the dates on that timeline?
I'm going to fix them, and then I will put them back up. Because I just, I made it more confusing than I needed to.
Are you going to put them back up on our website so that people can see it?
Oh, yep, I can put that up on the website. I'll also put them up while we're talking.
Okay.
I can edit right down here.
Great, thank you.
I apologize for that.
I just had one thing I wanted to say, like, can I ask a question, Sarah? Is that good? Yes, I'll take that.
I am nodding like crazy, but yes, of course.
So I just had one comment to make with regard to the secondary, the six through 12. So like I said in the August 11th meeting advocating for our little guys, I think it's time now, I'd like to say, give a quick plug for the big guys. And excuse my vernacular, big, little, whatever, six to 12. So when athletics and the nice weather ends, and we've got sort of, you know, the time where weather's not going to be so great, moving from like, you know, November to when the semester break target happens, I'd like to see us do more for the six through 12. I know the cohort sizes depend on the state and Governor Baker and all of that. But to the extent that we can still do some type of, you know, community stuff more often for these guys, in sort of that lag time, because I think that's going to be kind of a critical time. You know, it's going to be dark out, the weather's going to be bad, no athletics, you know. So I just, I want to put a plug out for that. Thank you. I just don't want us to forget those guys.
Understood.
Just jumping on that, you know, I ran into a lot of teachers at Market Basket this weekend. And first, I, and I also got a call from a parent whose kids are my kid's age, who is married to a teacher. And I was just blown away by how much work this has been for them. And I hope they know how much we appreciate the work they're doing, because it's onerous. But I'm wondering if we can have a report from Joanne and Patricia, you know, in the, maybe in the next couple of meetings about, you know, possibilities for hands-on learning, you know, labs, because labs are important for science majors, you know? We have such great programming in our science department, ASR, and then, and also art. I mean, social-emotional health and arts, it'd be great if some kids could get into the building and do some stuff like that. So I'm just going to throw that out there. I don't want to talk about it much more than that, but.
Yeah, I'll say two things. Every confidence that they are continuing to build forward opportunities for kids to get on campus, and there's a whole battery of clubs and activities that are just getting And there's a whole battery of clubs and activities that are just getting activated now, including art and STEM. I think there's a question of how if we can run robotics. But I think there's going to be increasing opportunity for students to be with other students participating in activities beyond just pencil and paper. Or no longer pencil and paper, but screen time academics.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. And if we want to have them, once we get this piece squared away, I know they'd be happy to come and give you a report out.
I have a couple of quick questions. Pam, can you just, for all of us, because there's a record-breaking number of people on here tonight, can you just let us know who was involved in developing this proposal that you're giving? Just specifically so that everybody understands where this is coming from. And then the second part of that is, and this may be coming later, but are you going to talk about how the indicators list, where we are right now in relation to the indicators? So that that's why this is recommended to move forward? Are we going to address that in a little bit?
Yep, Annie's got the indicators coming up next.
Okay, great.
So Teresa, your question about who developed this? Is it the hybrid? Is it decided to go here now? Is it...
The potential revising of the schedule and the...
Yep, so the schedule concept goes back to July, where we've always been working on Monday remote, Tuesday, Wednesday, one cohort, Thursday, Friday, a different cohort. And originally, this was planned district-wide. So we would try to keep all families together and in school on the same, at the same point in time. So right now, we are going forward with the... With that model, that Monday will be an all-remote day. Tuesday will have an on-school... One, Tuesday, Wednesday, one cohort will come to school. Thursday and Friday, another cohort will come to school. Now, the determination on whether it's half or full day and what the day looks like within will be subject to negotiation. So that is, those are the details that we are working through and are pressed to have available by the 14th and the 15th.
Okay, thank you. That's what I'm getting at, the changes within the day in half and full. Thank you so much.
So the general day structure, start time and end time are locked in. But the organization of the schedule within the day is a subject of bargaining.
Great, thank you.
And also, I think a bargaining, but also in response to some of the issues that the principals are trying to resolve. Could we say that?
Very fair, very fair.
Pam, can I have one other question? Sorry.
Joe, thanks, Annie. No, I just have a couple of quick things. One thing, Pam, this is really good to see. And I'm glad you keep emphasizing this is based on a starting point in July, approved in August, and we're going to be iterating and going. And one thing, well, two quick observations. Number one, it was really good to hear from teachers. A lot of the work that went into making schools physically a safe place, I think is going to help us as we move into hybrid. There were very few comments, concerns about air quality are the things that were on everybody's mind. Lunges popping up a little bit, but that's... This is why, that's at a level, I think, the school committee, if we work on the direction of going to hybrid, that's at the level. And I'm glad to hear that the detail that the principals, the staff, yourself have been into around working over all these things. One thing that came up, and maybe when we... It's not so much indicators, but if you could just repeat a little bit, you may have touched on it. But we're hearing back, as Annie said, that the teachers and the students, everybody's working really hard at this. And there's some element of, we've gone for the rigor of a very highly structured synchronous schedule based on spring. We wanted there to be accountability. DESC is requiring 900 contact hours, I think, of teaching. MCAS came back on. So we've gone for the rigor. One thing we talked about with this is doing a bit more asynchronous. And I don't think that's baked in here now, but can you just talk to synchronous, asynchronous, maybe how that balance might work? Be adjusted. Sorry, it's long-winded.
Sure. I think one of the working theories is that a way to give relief to the length of the schedule is to look at putting some asynchronous activities into the afternoon block. And have the morning be a focused and synchronous experience focusing on the core.
Yeah.
I think what those activities are, what those subjects are, are all part of the ongoing discussion.
Good. I'm glad to hear that because that's, as folks are learning, there's times for breaks and there's times that everybody's schedule is upset now, not just because of school, but because of life. And one last...
Yeah, I was going to say, what the half-day model would do was give everybody that universal lunch break in the middle of the day.
Yeah, that is one concern that's been voiced with students having different breaks at different times. One question also, just in terms of high-needs learners, we have the highest-need learners back in. If we do hybrid, is there anything that prevents or limits us from students at higher grades that need more access to services in person? Or is that kind of rolling on its own path as appropriate?
Did I understand you to mean students who are on IEPs?
IEPs, yeah, where they need more personal connection than what's available.
Yep, I'm sorry, I'm focusing on general ed. The four-day model that exists now for the majority of students, at least the ones that we can staff the full four days for, would continue as is. And I believe there's ongoing discussion about service delivery happening in the afternoon. But again, I hesitate too much about what the inside of the day is going to look like just now because that is all part of that ongoing discussion.
Okay, and thank you. I don't necessarily want to get into, just want to know that it's part of the confirmation, it's part of the discussion.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes, yep.
Okay.
I just have one final question. Can you establish expectations? So, you know, there are a lot of people with a lot of thoughts that they want to share with us. And what I've heard is that, you know, this takes a while to get used to. And so I just, I want everyone in the school to have a chance to make this work. So if we decide to go with hybrid, you know, what should... How long should parents give it to kind of take hold so that there's a little bit more rhythm and students are getting the habit? So, you know, this has been, what, three weeks with remote? And I think people are kind of feeling like they're getting into a groove. And now we're going to upset the apple cart and do something different, maybe? But just establish expectations, like how long should parents give it to kind of, before you start, you know...
Annie, I wish I could tell you that I'd been through this before and typically give it three weeks or four weeks and it will all settle in. I think what we're talking about in either of these models or anything that we come up with this year is just the sustainability of any one model for both the faculty having to constantly reinvent. I mean, it's like a first-year experience for everybody, even if you've been teaching for 25 years. You know, we've never done this before, we've never worked at this pace. We've never, you know, we've never fully committed to taking everything we do and creating an online platform for it. And now we're going to introduce a whole other component, which comes with a whole set of DESC health and safety regulations that we're going to be responsible for. So I don't have a crystal ball to say, oh, give it a couple of weeks and we'll be... And it'll be, you know, just like we, just like it was last year. I don't think we can set... If anybody is looking for something to make us feel like we did last year, it is not going to exist. I feel like, I'm optimistic that we are going to do the best job we can with this and we're going to create the best experience possible for kids, but we'll be trading problems. You know, so things that we didn't like about remote may look a lot better now that we come into hybrid. But I think what we're trying to achieve with hybrid is having the personal contact. Having kids see other kids and having kids make a daily, a couple of times a week connection with their teacher to start to build that component back in. If that's what we're aiming for as our number-one goal in this, and we keep that in mind, I think we can be very successful. If we think we're going to deliver the level of instruction that we did back in the spring of 19, before this ever happened, I don't know that we can make that happen. I know we'll make every effort to, but I don't know that we'll ever be able to get back to that level of productivity in our expertise in education being, you know, on display in a way that it was under very normal conditions when there is no sign of normal to come for some time now. But I think we can make the best situation we can.
Thank you, that's what I needed to hear.
And we'll tell you if it's not working, you know.
Oh, I know.
We'll tell you what we need to make... Or we'll tell you what we need to do or recommend, what we could do to make it better. I think there are very open lines of communication from every stakeholder group in this community. So I think we'll continue to just listen and take inputs and figure out new and creative ways of solving problems that we probably haven't even thought of yet as they come along.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, of course.
Thank you. I haven't been on any... I'm sorry, I'm sorry. That's Lily. We are going to have an opportunity for public comment in about 10 minutes, but right now, it's not open to the public. Sorry. I didn't answer enough. Thank you for asking, and there will be an opportunity coming up. All right. Any other school committee questions? Or discussion about Pam's report? Or Tech? Or Tricia's?
May I ask another question about the schedule that we have up here, the sample half-day?
Yep.
Is that something we're going to pull the trigger on when we vote? Or is that something that we're going to try a full day first? And then, maybe you said it and I didn't catch it, but at what point are we looking at that schedule?
This is part of our ongoing negotiations.
Ah, say that, sorry.
Yep, that's okay.
So I think when we make a vote tonight, it will be to go hybrid. And then the administration and the negotiations team is going to have to sort out exactly what the details of the hybrid look like. Would that be fair, Pam?
I would say what the content of the internal schedule of the day will be. Because what we're committing to is what we have in the reopen plan. Remote only Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, one cohort, Thursday, Friday, the second cohort. How the day plays out, whether it's a half-day for students or a full day to students, is part of our ongoing negotiations.
Okay. Teresa's got her hand up. Just parroting that, I hope we're all, like, everyone listening in the background what Pam just said. What we're talking about tonight is to vote to move forward with hybrid within these parameters, and then the rest gets worked out down the line. And I just want to say, thanks. I can see, I can see that a lot has gone into this consideration. And we're going to talk about the indicators. But I think it's just a good reminder that the work is always going on behind the scenes. It's a reminder for all of us as parents and for me as well to just assume good intent. Everyone really is trying to make this work for everybody else. And sometimes it works out that when we give our feedback, the things come together and things look a little different and we can make change for a variety of different reasons. But I just, I just want to say thank you because what's being proposed here does address a lot of the things that are becoming difficult for families at the elementary level. And they can potentially be resolved with this. And so I'm grateful for that.
I think one thing I haven't mentioned, and it kind of gets in the weeds, Teresa, is like, one thing we feel pretty strongly about, and then the principals have advocated for this. If we make a schedule change, is it a change that we can live with if we have to toggle back and forth between remote and hybrid? And kind of shelve what the schedule is now and pull it out when we're ready to go back to more of an everyday-in-school experience? So I think we're cognizant of the fact that we can't keep upending the schedule, either externally or internally, because it's just too disruptive.
Understandable, understandable. And I think as we're looking at it right now, clearly between the remote and the hybrid, the toggling, not so much between the regular full-day, five-day schedule. And so this can...
I'm hoping we get a silver bullet at some point and we can just go back to some semblance of normal. But I don't, I don't necessarily see that in the near future.
Of course. Thank you.
Yep.
Shannon, did you have your hand up? Other school committee comments and questions?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. All right. So this is what, sort of what we're looking at. And then in order to put all this in place, we need to look at our hybrid transition indicators. So Shannon and Annie have taken it upon themselves and done a great job putting a presentation together. So do you guys want to take that on?
Sure. Pam, do you have it or do I need to just to share my screen?
I have it. Do you mind, I will throw it up?
Okay.
And then just a reminder, after we hear about the transitions, that's when we're going to reopen public comment for another 20-minute session. So if you are preparing your comments now, then it's great to just get all ready.
So Shannon and Pam and I have been working on these indicators for a couple of weeks now. And we had them in a table that was clumsy and awkward. And so we looked at some other districts to see what they had for kind of more intuitive or more graspable format. So we go to the second slide.
Yes, ma'am.
So if we wanted to look at hybrid implementation for K through five, we took the different buckets, health, safety, educational program, staffing, and financial, and tried to just put the measurements there in a clear way. So first, the map that the state provides, gray or green, would indicate that we are good to go. And I think at this point, it is gray, isn't it?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Safety guidelines are met and the HVA systems are met, meet seasonal requirements. That work has been completed. We're working with the boards of health in both Manchester and Essex. And they are in alignment with the decision that they have a notification system in place and they are going to work with us on contact tracing. So those are conversations we've had with them and we feel confident that those systems are in place and we're poised in that area. In terms of educational program at the K-5 level, that the instructional supports are flexible and functional and the district can meet the on-time learning goals. Now, I know there's a question about, based on the hybrid plan that we just saw, Pam, do we meet time on learning goals with that half-day plan?
I think we would be able to do it as long as we offer additional afternoon online instruction.
Okay.
Yep.
So asynchronous and synchronous both apply?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Staffing, this has been the challenge, and you heard about that tonight. All classrooms are staffed by a teacher. We have TA and substitute staffing needs are met. Also with nurses and nurse assistants, the same idea. And then the bus monitor staffing requirements. I think we had five before. And I guess the question is, if we're not including the one-and-a-half-mile radius, does that help with that factor? The bus monitors?
We have five buses we need, or six buses. So we need five or six monitors. We need a person per bus. The likelihood of... We're also looking into whether or not we can figure out a workaround for that as well. I don't see a lot of applications coming our way. We've raised the hourly rate to $17 in hopes of attracting people to that role. So we'll do everything we can, but we're also working on some contingency plans in case we cannot secure it. So it doesn't collapse because of that.
Yeah. And then finally, financial. We've talked a lot about this. And I think we've proposed some potential costs on that. And I think we're going to talk about that at some point. Are we doing that now or are we going to talk about that under budget?
We've got the budget update to provide you, so I think we could do it under there.
Okay, great.
Because we're kind of looking at a not-to-exceed number anyway in terms of reserve utilization.
Right. Okay, and then the next slide?
Can I just jump in, Annie, on the financial? I think it's also important to mention that we're also talking about this on an ongoing basis with our partners in the collaboration group. So it's part of a larger discussion with both towns.
Yep.
So middle-high school is a little bit more challenging. The same health and safety criteria apply. The educational program is, I think, one of the sticking points for the school committee, which is that we wanted the full educational program to continue because our students are ambitious and want to have the full educational opportunities. because our students are ambitious and want to have the full educational opportunities. So the cohort size is also an issue. And Pam, I'm going to let you speak to this because I feel like I will stumble if I try to explain this.
I don't trust myself these days because I'm a little overtired, but essentially, the issue we continue to run into at the high school, and I know Tricia's on the line in case I stumble, is that in order for us to run the program, we need...
Your audio died.
...for a group of students of approximately 60 to gather and interact with each other on the day that their cohort's in. So we don't see in the guidance, we never received confirmation from the state, that it was acceptable to have that many students interacting with one another on a daily basis. So until we can basically bring in 50% of our students and allow them to just go about their daily business, changing classes frequently throughout the day, we really can't get them in and run through the program. So I know what we're looking at is what some other districts are doing in terms of just getting kids in. And if it's just bringing them in for advisory, I think we've started to look at the new report model where kids go into the high school, or they'll be starting to, either this week or next, once every 10 days, or two days every 10 days. So they'll have 10 or 12 meetings between now and the end of the first semester. So they're, and they've gone down to 25% capacity to create four cohorts. So you're not coming to school to get the program under that circumstance, you're just simply coming to school to check in with someone. And there's merit in that, and we can look at it. When we were designing and talking this summer, we were attempting to design something that would allow kids to come to school and be able to access their teachers for the purpose of taking their course load. So until we either completely rework it so that the purpose of coming in is to either check in and be able to stay in a managed cohort, or we get clearance to bring more kids in than we believe we can at this point in time, we're a little stuck. I think staffing at the secondary is also a more significant issue.
Yeah. And Pam, can you talk also? I know some other districts have gotten their secondary in, but it also depends on the size of the building. It depends on the physical layout of the building to be able to move kids around. In order to deliver any program, whether it be the whole program or, you know, a facsimile of that, kids have to be able to move around. There has to be switching. So I think the facility also lends itself to whether or not that's done more easily in some countries than others, and we don't have a building that would facilitate that.
Correct. We have a size, we have a size of the building, size of the classroom problem in addition, and that shows itself even more at the middle school where the class sizes are up to 28 in some circumstances. We couldn't, we have to break into three groups.
That's the same with the high school.
I'm sorry, I'm having a little audio issue. Did I just hear somebody say same at the high school?
I'm sorry, I just joined back in, and yes, that is the same with the high school. We need to go to at least three cohorts.
Okay. And then the other factors are the same. And then the last slide is just considerations that we should think about. And if I had mine open, Pam, there we go. We have talked about surveillance testing. There's a cost that comes with that. But, you know, I have a kid who was at Gettysburg who was doing surveillance testing, and she's home. So, you know, there's a mixed, a mixed success rate with that. Events may force a shutdown. You know that there are some schools that have shut down. I think, I don't know where they were. There was a party or something, and they had to shut the school down.
Several, yeah.
Several, yeah. Lessons learned from other districts. There's a possibility of additional funding in the new calendar year, hopefully with the new administration in the White House, since they're abandoning any work on that now. And then a full in-school return is possible when social distancing requirements have ceased or eased. And frankly, I think what we're seeing is that where there's easing, sometimes there may not be the outcomes they want. So I'm glad we're sticking with those criteria, but that's where we are with the criteria. If anyone wants to review that, maybe we should go back to the slide for K-5, Pam, and have school committee talk about that?
All right. So we, do you want, we were going to have, we can have school committee comment a little bit, and then we'll have the public comment. So Pam, if you could maybe open the chat just so people can start putting their names in for their public comment opportunities. And then, does school committee have questions or comments on this implementation criteria? I want to thank Annie and Shannon and Pam for working on this and making it so much more user-friendly because it's really much easier to understand now. So thank you, guys.
I stole the PowerPoint deck. No, I stole the deck, so I can't take credit for it. It's somebody else's design. Yeah, no, that ain't me.
Sarah, this is Ken. I had just an initial question, maybe it comes down to the financial. It's, and I'm just curious if there's been any thought. It seems to me somewhat of our, that our costs, really the majority of additional costs would be personnel costs. It sounds like we're in a bit of a catch-22 because there aren't really a pool of candidates available to hire at the moment. So we may be limited not only by funding, but by availability, it sounds like.
It seems like it's limited, but I think, I feel, we're feeling pretty optimistic that we'll be able to move this forward if we voted in. I am, but I don't want to speak for the administration.
I think there's a lot of stuff on our part, and I know in speaking with the principals, one of their, and Allison in particular, who's been living this a little bit in real time since we opened for kids on the 16th. Staffing is going to be an ongoing issue for us, no matter what and at each level. So at the elementary level, we look to be in solid shape right now with classroom teacher participation, which puts us in a position of hiring extra support. So we can do the best we can there. But I think what we've learned, you know, we've learned a lot from our small implementation with Allison and principals working together to bring in about 45 special ed students. We've already had an instance where we've had to cancel class because a teacher has had to quarantine or called in sick, and we simply don't have a replacement. So I think those are some of the things we just have to be aware of and agree together that the effort to bring kids in is important, but we're going to take a little bit of the bumps. We'll all work together to tolerate the bumps that may come with it. As you know, we had, there was a letter that went out, we had a situation with a COVID positive situation at one of the elementary schools. Impact if we were in school would have been a potential suspension of classes for two cohorts of students for 14 days, because we had some staff members who had to adhere to the quarantining guidelines. So I'm expecting those things will happen. It will be up and down. We're going to try to do as much targeted shutdown as opposed to closing down whole buildings. But I fully anticipate these things will happen, and we'll just have to keep the lines of communication open and try to be as flexible as possible. If we don't have the level of extra staff, we've been, we've been trying to articulate that we would need to keep things running on a smoother level. So I think you just get to the point where you realize that you're, if there isn't staffing to be had, there's no perfect, to what level can we get it to give our, put our best foot forward? And I think that's where we're at right now.
Thank you. It sounds like we're, there are other schools also looking at futures in and around us, so it's not a perfect, it's not a, it's not a hiring market by anybody's stretch.
No, I did a search. Within a 10-mile radius of Manchester, Essex, there were over 200 job postings.
Wow.
So we're not alone in recruiting, but I just, I know the Y is running into the same issue with trying to find enough extra hands to open up more enrollment for the Y program. So we won't stop. We'll keep looking. We'll keep trying to get quality people in here. But, you know, we know it's going to be a challenge.
Yeah, thank you.
I do think the staged implementation even, you know, would be helpful because at least we can try to secure one level before we move to the next level. That's helpful in trying to make it work.
Yeah. No, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yep.
I have a question. Has there been conversations about, because I know, like, we're in the gray now, and it can be in the green, but, and I know the states come out and said, don't, don't make decisions based on one week of data, but is there been conversations about how many weeks of data we consider making a change if, like, we get back into the red or things like that? I would just be afraid that, you know, if it's one week of red, it's like, what are we doing? And we don't have a process in place. Is there been conversations about kind of how much data to look at to possibly make a change if we do make this change?
Annie, do you want to take it? Shannon, you want me to take it? I can tell you what the state is recommending. We watch for a three-week trend before we make any drastic move. If we're escalating yellow to red, we may find ourselves not acting on the data, but having to act on absentee issues. So I think what we were saying in the indicator group is that three weeks, is that, am I accurately reporting that, Annie and Shannon?
Yes, that's what we talked about. We also have data, sorry, go ahead.
No, I was going to say, three weeks of MAP trend, unless in consultation with local DPH, they are aware of other factors that would create the need for a faster response.
And I think, right, and I think the Hamilton example is a good one. So Hamilton's Board of Health, I think, is the one that motivated them to go to remote because they had so many cases, I think, at Endicott.
Gordon.
So, yeah, that's why we need to have the local Board of Health person working with us to inform us, because they have that information well before we would.
I think that's just kind of one of the things I'm weighing, because, you know, you set up potentially an apparatus during the remote-only period, and then we switch to hybrid, and if that, and if you kind of, you know, whether that's remove a tutor, remove a pod, remove a group, and then you jump back into hybrid, and that doesn't last long, and you've kind of already dismantled your other apparatus, and then you have to kind of rebuild that. That's kind of just one of the things I'm thinking about.
So I think the stressor for people in, working in the district, is that we've tried to build an apparatus that goes back and forth pretty smoothly. So we're never stopping remote learning, even while we're in hybrid, so that if we have to flip back to remote learning, that framework is still there, and the schedule will still play. So that's what Teresa's comment was on looking at that half-day schedule. I think what she was noting was, there's, there's evidence in there of the feedback we've been getting from some of the parents about the length of day schedule, and whether that stands as a remote-only schedule or a hybrid schedule, it works to address that issue. Did I get that right, Teresa?
Yes.
But I just want to follow up on what Matt is saying, because I think he's looking at it from the parent's perspective. So if you're a family and you've established a pod, but then we're going to hybrid, so then you let your pod facilitator go, but then there's a chance we'll be right back in remote for a variety of reasons, and then maybe you're stuck without your person you hired. So I think that is, and that was, that for me, that was one of the reasons why I didn't want to jump right into hybrid at the beginning, because it is, I think it is going to be inconsistent. Like, I think we are going to be going back and forth, or your little cohort may be shut down, or your teacher might be absent. So I think it's going to be really hard for parents to sort of rely on whatever schedule we get to as a reliable source of childcare. And I hate to say that, but I just think that's the reality that we're looking at.
Absolutely. And I would encourage everyone to keep your pods going if you went through the time and effort to establish them, because there's going to be still three days a week where kids are at home, and a potential for half-days as well. And we could, we could slide back, or any group, any subgroup within could slide back at any point in time. So if you have something you're comfortable with, I'd strongly encourage you to keep it at least through the winter. And if we get on a real trend and things are just keep getting better and better, and we're adding more and more hours, then maybe revisit it. But that's made me nervous, and I've been, I feel bad that I haven't been able to communicate that as a concern, and it's probably appeared more as an obstacle. The hybrid has a lot of potential, but it also has a lot of pitfalls. And its main pitfall is just that it's going to be erratic. So if we're looking to try to provide stability and reliability through the schedule, it's going to be completely dependent on a set of factors outside of our control. So that's been my number-one concern about it all along. But in person, you know, full in-person would run that risk right now as well. So it's just a matter of us all knowing kind of what the strengths and the weaknesses are, and being prepared to manage them together, and know we'll make, we'll have to make some decisions on health and safety that may impact a kid's ability to come to school. So there'll be like a lot, a lot of snow days, is how I'm thinking of it. Potential for a lot of snow days.
Teresa has her hand up. Go ahead, Teresa.
Thanks. Just two quick things. So on the, the same thing that I've been saying over, and the reason that I voted specifically to start in remote was the educational program concern. And so where it says instructional supports are flexible and functional, I guess I'm not looking to change the indicator, but could you speak to whether or not things like RTI and WIN are absolutely remaining? Like, if that's a consideration there, because that's a, that's a real big concern for me with the elementary level.
I can't speak to the specific schedule of RTI and WIN at Essex, and it's different at Memorial, but I know all required services will be built in to the program. So I need to do a little digging on that for you in terms of how they're looking to structure. Like, I don't, I don't think WIN fits into the schedule as neatly that we had up, as neatly as it does in the current schedule.
Okay. So my main concern with that is just that, that when we say flexible and functional, are the, are kids being identified for targeted support and carried through with it?
Absolutely. Yep.
Okay. That's great. And then, is there just one tiny more thing, Sarah? It'd be so fast.
Yep.
So with, just briefly on the staffing, so TAs, substitutes, and bus monitors, those are a concern. Is that correct, Pam?
Yep. And we're also looking to fill two teacher positions at this point.
Okay. So we've had, I've had a lot of parents reach out and tell me over and over, over the last couple of months, how they want to help. So if you have skills and availability right now, it'd be a great time to consider applying for some of these positions so that these things can move forward. Just putting that out there.
Yep. And the posting is on Facebook, and it is on Twitter, and it is on our main page, under employment opportunities, and also in the Twitter bar. So I know someone has generously, Kate, you have generously volunteered yourself for employment. Please go to the website. We will be happy to talk to you.
Okay. So I'm just going to, we'll come back to school committee comment. So if school committee people are dying to say more and ask more questions, that's totally fine. I did ask people to follow the protocol of just putting their names and addresses in the chat if they would like to make a comment. And I'm actually going to go first. Nicole Collins had her name in at the beginning. Is Nicole there? And does Nicole want to speak now? Okay, not hearing from Nicole. And then Lily was the nice mom who tried to ask a question, and I cut her off. Lily, Lily, how about you go ahead and have your question now?
Thank you. Obviously, my first meeting, I didn't understand the protocol, but thank you for letting me know. I, I'm just wondering about if, was any discussion about prioritizing certain age groups within the school district? Of course, we want to be fair to everybody. Everybody's in the same boat. We all have children that we want to support. But we're at our youngest learners, being in front of a screen and not having really any other investment in school because they haven't been there ever before. So if you guys have any feedback on that idea, I know it's been going around in other districts, prioritizing K-2 to be all in school. It's, it's just something that I'm very worried about. Thank you.
Thanks, Lily. All right. And then after... Thanks, Lily. All right. And then after Lily and Nicole was Lauren Harrison. Lauren, would you like to make a comment?
Yeah, thanks for the time. Um, I just wanted to ask a couple of specific questions. One, I think Anne just brought up was surveillance.
For one second, just before you guys. Um, this is, uh, just so everybody understands, this is public comment. So we're not going to do a big Q and A back and forth, but if you have questions, we can maybe try to address them later. But, um, just so everybody realizes it's public comment, not, uh, open discussion. Okay.
Yep, that's fine. So my first, I have like quick three. One would be surveillance testing, um, as Anne discussed, and I would lean in in the community. We're a pretty strong community and we have a lot of resources and, um, educational backgrounds that can help with surveillance testing. So I would lean in on the community on that one because I know there's a lot of bright people with some really smart ideas. My second comment would be, um, to really assess the social emotional welfare of our students. I feel like the school committee and the administration has put the physical beings and safety above everything, which was fine. Um, I have a third grader, I have two juniors, and I have an out-of-district placement. So my elementary school child is an IEP. He does not qualify for DESI guidelines. However, he has pulled out, um, 375 minutes a week and he is refusing to get on Zoom any other time. So I think the social emotional needs of our students, especially at the K through five age, needs to be addressed. And then my last comment is just, I echo Shannon's suggestion that the six through 12-year-old graders, the high school, middle school, really need some social interaction to connect with their peers in a safe manner. I have two juniors right now and they are doing a really good job. But I think the social component of being in a community is lacking and they would benefit strongly from that. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Lauren. And I'm sorry I had to cut you off there at the beginning.
No, that's okay. That's okay. Rules are rules. I get it.
Betsy McKean, you're up next. Betsy, are you there? Okay, I see a few people who made comments in the chat. Betsy, did you want to comment? And then Todd Etna, did you?
She happened to step away or something.
Well, um, is Todd Etna there?
Yeah, it's actually Todd Etna. Oh, hi. Okay, we couldn't hear you. We can't hear you, but we'll contact. We'll have the opportunity to. We good?
Oh, and I'm here now. Actually, can you hear me now?
Um, okay.
Okay, I'm here. This is Lisa. So I just have a couple of comments. Um, I wanted to echo what Erica had wrote in the, um, the chat about the six-foot square, or the six-foot distant requirement for social distancing. I think that was a restriction that we voted on in August, the school committee did. And I think we should reconsider that. That would lift some of these other restrictions and indicators that we're putting on ourselves. Um, the other thing that I'm a little concerned about is just the half-days. If we're doing half-days, let's just do the full day. It just, you know, I've got a fifth grader and a seventh grader and I feel like it's just another transition that we're going to have to do when we transition to full days and then we transition to three days a week, four days a week. And then my final comment is, uh, some of the classes are really small right now in the elementary school. For example, my son has 14 kids in his class. Can we just get them all back together four days a week instead of just sending them two days? We're talking this very tiny class here and I, I have not been able to vision how, oh, how they're going to be able to teach kids remote and kids in-person at the same time. I know other schools are doing it. I don't know how it's going, but I have not been able to wrap my head around that. So, that's it.
Great. Thank you, Lisa. And now Betsy.
Hi, can you guys hear me now? Okay, great. Um, so I'm the parent of an Essex elementary first and third grader and I'm the president of the PTO at the, at EES. So I, I just, on behalf of, as a parent and on behalf of the PTO, we just want to say thank you to the school committee and the teachers and staff. We know you guys have been working really hard. Um, that said, and I was personally very excited to see a hybrid plan being moved forward tonight potentially. So thank you for that as well. My comment, um, uh, is around implementation of the hybrid model and I know that's not the job of the school committee. So, um, I just wanted to respectfully ask the administration while we have your captive attention. It will be very, very helpful for families to get a better sense of what will happen in the classroom at the elementary level during a hybrid day as soon as possible because I think that it will have a significant impact, at least for my family and for many others that I know, about whether or not we choose to go hybrid at all. You know, that slide, you showed the options of multiple, um, options for families. I always thought I would be very pro-hybrid. I, I have said that all, all along. But when I start to think or hear about the kids in the classroom physically being actually on their screen all day long as well and it's not really there being a big difference between being physically in the classroom at home in, um, in terms of screen time, it's very concerning and it, it potentially would affect my, uh, family's choice about what we choose for our kids. So, um, it's just a respectful aspect. The more information that can be given to families about implantation over the next couple of weeks as we work out those details, that would be very helpful. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Betsy. And then Kate, you're up next.
Hi, Sarah. Hi, Kate. I just want to point out how amazing our teachers have been and how hard they've worked to engage, um, students on the screens and adapt their craft for this new medium. And then at the same time, I also want to point out that I feel, um, that in the hybrid model, having teachers engage students on a screen and in the classroom simultaneously is a huge ask. And to me, that's not an optimal educational experience for the teachers and it's not optimal for the kids. So to, to echo Betsy's point, um, from a parent's perspective, I know that there's a certain level of risk of putting my kids in the classroom and I know that, you know, every family is going to have to independently weigh that risk benefit ratio. But I think it would be much easier to justify the benefits if we knew that when our kids are in the classroom, they're getting the full attention of their classroom teacher. I would love for my kids to be back in the classroom, but if they aren't receiving the full benefits of an in-school experience, I have a really hard time personally justifying that risk. So, um, you know, I just wanted to note that for my kids, I would prefer a sounder educational model for the in-school learning portion, even if that means that when they are on their remote days, they're doing asynchronous learning. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Kate. And just, I, if this is not going to be a back and forth, but I do want to say that I, I do know that the principals, the teachers and the administration are working hard to figure out exactly what the hybrid will look like and it's a little bit flexible at this point. So all the feedback is really good to hear. Okay. So if you guys could refrain from making comments in the comments and just let you put your names in there, it makes it a little easier for me to see who's actually in there waiting to say something. Sarah Sack, you're up next.
Hi, thank you. Uh, I just, um, maybe my comments are going to explain why everyone has a hard time balancing everything because I actually think, uh, the synchronous learning has going, has gone better than I thought. However, I'm a huge proponent of getting our kids back in. I have three children, two in elementary in Manchester and one in middle school. But I, the synchronous is incredibly important to me and, and I think that the kids have actually done okay at that. And I think getting them back in school, they will have the ability to be at home and be in the school and manage both, you know, if the teacher has to talk to somebody on, that's on the screen or the teacher they've done, they've learned to do that so far. And so the kids would have the extra benefit of being in the classroom and the teacher could manage, has learned how to manage online. I think it actually would work very well. My question is, is the Monday going to be a synchronous, um, learning experience? And then it sounded like, I'm still a little confused on the half, with the half-day visus versus the whole day. And I know that comment was made too, but, um, earlier. That's it.
Yeah. I think some of that's, um, still undecided because the teachers and the administrators and the principals are, are still working out the details and so that's why we don't have all the details. But again, good to get all the feedback. Kimberly Levitt?
Kimberly? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Uh, yes, I was just wondering, uh, what would the criteria be to revisit the, um, social, social distancing? Um, and I apologize if this has already been asked and someone already answered it. That, that, um, you know, um, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education said, I believe there was a comment made earlier in the comments box. What would the criteria be for the school committee to revisit, um, looking at smaller distancing numbers?
Okay, thanks, Kimberly. Um, I don't, I don't know that we're interested in revisiting at, at this time, but it certainly comes up a lot. You're not the first person to ask. Um, oh my gosh. If you guys have a conversation, I can't see who's waiting to talk. Okay, Kimberly, did you have a special comment?
Well, I just was curious, why were you not interested? I, I think that's something that the public's entitled to now.
Um, okay. Well, like I said, we're not having a back and forth right now. We did vote on the six-feet distancing a while ago. That would be subject to negotiation. It's also, you know, it's, it's what we've already decided. So if we, as I said, we hear that a lot and, um, I guess there's a chance that we could revisit it. I don't think we'll be revisiting it tonight. Um, and then.
Asking what the criteria was when you would. Is there, like, do you need to see?
I, I don't think we have a criteria for when we would. Thank you, Kimberly. Um, Jake, you're up next.
Hi, I just want to, um, maybe return to a comment that I opened with. If the main goal of getting students back in the building is to have personal contact, there could be a lot more of that now using the technology we have that is currently disabled and actively not being used. And I think that would be worth reconsidering for, uh, getting that kind of personal contact. And the second, uh, I would highly encourage you to hold off on a decision until we actually can see what that in-classroom experience is going to look like for students. I agree with the prior comment that it's very likely students are going to have to be sitting in their chair at their desk with their laptops open in order for the at-home students to participate. I don't see how that can be done any other way, given the technology we have. And that does not seem to add anything for being in the building. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks. Jake, Tamara, did you have a comment? I'm sorry, I, I think, I think somebody's typing with their microphone on and so then we're unable to hear Tamara. So if you could just make sure that you're muted if you're not speaking, that would be awesome. Okay, I think we're good.
Um, so my, my comment as a physician, I think that, um, likely the biggest reason is the half-day is so that lunch isn't including, included at school. Um, because I think that eating is probably the highest-risk activity that students and our teachers will be doing at school. Uh, number two, the question, if, if, uh, we can consider if we, uh, distance criteria with small enough classes, can we consider, um, classes that are small enough can go all four days? So something to just consider. Um, the other comment is, I have a kindergartner and a second grader, so they, if you said they could come tomorrow, they would do it. If you said wear a mask like literally all the time, they would do it. So, uh, my children are very motivated and, and want to be in a school building with, um, teachers that they can look eye to eye with. Um, and then the last question is if, if you're willing to discuss the surveillance testing, just kind of explain to parents, um, how you plan to implement it, what you plan to do. Um, and I've read, there was a nice article talking about surveillance testing for to look at how good our measures are. Um, so people keeping that in mind, that, um, all of the guidelines of mask-wearing and hygiene and physical distancing, how we prevent outbreaks in our community and, and, and thank you for all that you do.
Thank you, Tamara. All right. Um, Christine Oliver.
Hi, I'm just curious. So the Chromebooks that have been issued struggle to run the applications that are necessary to deliver the content. So I would like to understand better, you know, is there an expectation that parents should buy something or is something else on the way? You know, I have observed with my third grader, it taking up to 20 minutes into the start of a lesson to get people on to what they need to be with the technology they have.
Um, Tricia, were you here at the beginning of the meeting? Because there was quite a lengthy presentation on technology.
Not.
I'm not sure that was, oh, sorry, wrong Tricia. I think.
Sorry, Tricia Puglese. Okay. Um, all right. So maybe Christine can go back and watch that presentation. I, I'm, I know technology frustrations are so frustrating and I, I do know that, um, the teachers and the administrators, as they try to sort out the details of whatever hybrid we're able to go into, are certainly on top of thinking about all of the screen time and connectivity and the issues about being on a screen and teaching on a screen and watching from a screen. I know that that is something that they are all trying really hard to work out.
Well, it's less about being on the screen and more about the technology not being able to run the applications.
Oh, I'm sorry, Tricia. I didn't realize you were still there. Yeah. Um, so that was discussed, uh, quite extensively earlier, so you might want to go back and catch that. And then definitely call the help desk, um, if you're having specific problems. Okay. So I think that looks like it for public comment. So back to school committee. Anybody on school committee have more to say about the proposal, the, uh, indicators? To respond to any of the things we heard in comment?
Um, I know that we had wanted to vote on this, but I think the financial piece is something we haven't talked about. So I, I would propose that we hear the budget update and then take a vote.
Okay. Anybody else have, uh, oh, um, all right, I'm sorry. The chat was still open and Bernie would like to make two more comments. So sure, Bernie, you can wrap it up.
Hi, Sarah. Thank you so much. Um, just wanted to put in a plug for, um, a comment, I believe, Principal Willis and Superintendent made in some emails that they're working hard to do cohorts, keeping sibling groups in mind. Um, so to the extent that can be adhered to, it'd be really helpful if we have kids in different grades from the same household, having them bathe in the same color. Thank you.
I know that that's always been part of the, yeah, for sure.
Yeah, and we're trying to work in the pods as well and that's a nod to the principals of, for thinking about that. Trying to be proactive and get a sense of who has pre-established and spent time organizing pods.
Yes, wonderful.
Yep.
All right, any other?
Can I make one general comment? I know we're not doing the Q and A and I know there's a, a real, and this is really in support of our faculty who is put in incredible amount of time and effort to try to stay as far ahead of the curve as possible. I understand the desire for us to be able to block out with great detail for you how the day will look when they're in school, but I think there is going to be some level of us all experiencing it together for the first time. So every effort's going to be made to, um, create a link between students at home and students in school and do so in a way that does allow the teacher, hopefully with some support, additional supports in the building, to be able to connect with the kids who are in front of them in an authentic way. But to say we can pinpoint right now how much screen time there will be, how much, um, smart board usage there will be, how much we'll be able to create collaborative time between the kids at home and at school, I think that's just beyond our ability right now. I think we're working very hard to create an opportunity to bring students in and to put our best foot forward to try to create a good experience for them while they're in school, while also keeping students who are at home engaged. And we're going to strive to try to make it a full day out of the gate if we can. Tamara was right. Lunch is a big issue. It's a big consideration, um, for us and I think we. It's a big consideration, um, for us and I think we have to talk through some of the issues around there. So I just ask for people's understanding that we're trying to move this step by step, um, forwards to try to get to a better place each month in each iteration. Um, but we're not going to have the level of detail that some people will need, um, to make the decision that they want to. So I'd ask that you, that you try because we are in unprecedented times and this isn't just a typical year of us trying to open and not being able to give you our curriculum details. So thank you.
Anyone else? Any other school committee people would like to make any more comments on transition indicators, anything anybody said, or the reopening plan?
Should we move to a vote for the, um, transition indicators? Cause I think there are a lot of them pretty straightforward and with more details to follow.
Oh, do you want to, do we have, I don't, do we need to make up to vote to accept the transition indicators? Or do we just-
Sure.
Pam, do you think we need to vote to accept our transition indicators? You're muted.
I would vote to accept the framework, yes.
Okay.
Sure. So Ken, do you want to go forward on that?
So, yeah, I, I moved that we proceed with accepting the framework for the transition indicators to hybrid, as shared on, and maybe if you can just run through the slides, because we're going to be doing this for K through five, I think. I'm not sure what other slides, just to get the full extent. Is it just K through five right now? I've already lost track of.
Just K through five right now with K two. So to, to the question about are we prioritizing our youngest, yes, we're moving first on K two, then on three, five, but elementary is our priority at the moment.
Okay, and I'm just moving a vote to accept the framework as proposed and shown on the screen right now, the hybrid implementation criteria for K through five. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we need to do a roll call vote, so Eric?
I think Eric, um, just checked the media to sign off.
Okay, um, so Eric, Annie, did you second?
I did.
Uh, Shannon?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
And I'm a yes to accept the indicators. All right, and then moving forward, do we want to put the budget update before we talked about a vote for moving to transition?
Please.
That was suggested.
Yes, please.
Yes, please.
All right, let me pull that up.
Pam, I sent you, uh, one last version.
Uh-oh.
Sorry. Nope, just about to say it.
No, that's okay. Um, we're in the same boat this afternoon that our meetings ran very long. All right, be right up. And as I'm pulling it up, I guess just to re, um, to loop in the folks on the call, um, the last couple of meetings, um, the committee has asked us to just put together a, a budget overview so they had a sense of where we were financially, because we've been talking with some detail about what our, um, estimates are, uh, for potential COVID costs and the implications they may have on the overall health of our budget. So I think from my perspective, again, not offering it as, um, an obstruction, but something that we feel people need to be briefed on as we go, so everyone is aware of, um, what we're expending. So when we drop, pull up at the end of the year, there aren't questions as to if, why certain budget lines may be over. So turn it over to Avi to give you the financial update.
Thank you, and I'm actually just, um, pulling up one or two things on my end. Okay, so just quickly, um, quick update on what's going on with the current year. I think for, uh, folks who remember, and it says FY twenty, I apologize, FY twenty-one, that should say, so, um, just apologize about that. But the, uh, as you may remember, when we passed our budget for the current fiscal year, which is called fiscal twenty-one, um, we had a budget, do the normal budget cycle, and then we decided, um, as COVID went along, because the budget was adopted in late, I'm sorry, early February, in our traditional timeframe, but town meeting doesn't typically happen till May and, uh, with COVID happening in between and a lot of uncertainty around state aid and, uh, costs and what, uh, what was going to happen with education, et cetera, um, and just the inability to have town meetings in, in a normal, uh, timeframe. Uh, the budget was modified in May based on an estimate that was pretty consistent with what we were hearing at the time around state aid, uh, cuts of ten to twenty percent. We, um, passed a budget scenario, we had four budget scenarios that we took everyone through for fiscal twenty-one and we, um, adopted one in May as a revision to the first budget, um, that went to both towns, uh, for town meeting in, in June and was passed, which include a ten percent cut to state aid. Uh, as many people know, the state didn't pass a budget at the start of the fiscal year that was kind of into spend mode for some time. Uh, one of the issues that they were facing was very uncertain state receipts, taxes, et cetera, with tax deadlines being delayed and uncertain impact from, um, sales tax and all the things that were shut down in the economy. And so certainly I think there was a lot of fear. Um, some of the discussions that have been happening since first, that the state did have an interim budget that was passed for, um, the first, I believe it was three months of the fiscal year, um, and they have said that their goal is to strive for level funding for the first, um, for the full year, but that the, a full year budget does not currently exist. And so, um, that would be good news relative to our budget. Um, it's still kind of a TBD. Um, and again, the, the amount of state aid that was cut was about $350,000. That was state and federal aid, the large predominant portion of which was state aid. And then, um, there is, um, some ongoing discussion that's happening. Last year, there was, state's been in a multi-year process of trying to, um, update the, um, chapter seventy formula, which is the basic aid that state provides to, uh, towns and regional school districts for education. Um, and, um, you know, in our district, if you're new on the line, uh, because of the formula, yeah, it, it puts a large burden on communities with, um, higher property values or income levels to fund local education themselves with the state putting in a small portion. So we might get only say a fifteen percent of our budget funded by the state aid, but still the cuts we talked about were potentially significant. Uh, one of the multi-year discussions that's been happening is how to update the chapter seventy model to reflect the fact that it really has not kept pace with the cost of educating students in multiple, multiple ways. Um, two of the most often cited being health insurance, uh, costs that have grown much faster than the two to three percent that you see in, um, in the chapter seventy model and in the framework for proposition two and a half, which limits increases on, on local taxation. Uh, so the state came up with a multi-year process for how it would update the model to try to, um, I, I guess I would say provide more funding based on the fact that they acknowledged that the cost of educating students and all the things that go into that is more expensive. Uh, a lot of those updates have been put on hold with COVID and so, um, with money tight and, um, ongoing discussions about what to do, there has been some discussion about whether, uh, what's known as hold harmless aid should be looked at again. Um, and that's aid that, uh, goes to districts, if your enrollment isn't growing, you still might get, um, a minimum aid increase. In recent years, it's been about $30 per head. And as that starts to compound over multiple years, um, you know, you might have a multi-year amount that's really, um, aggregating, some people call it, um, hold harmless debt, where if, if that were to go away, and they would say it'd be strictly based on enrollment, which may seem logical, but, um, costs don't tend to decrease in the same way when you, you know, if you lose students, unless you lose a lot of students, which we haven't. Um, that we could be, um, MERC could be subject to some cuts over and above what's happening in any given year, uh, due to COVID, but more because, um, they want to change the formula. So that's just something I want to bring to the school committee's attention. It's been out there. Um, it's kind of an ongoing conversation. I think there's an open comment period about, um, what should happen and so I think it's just important for people who, to understand that in our community, um, even though the large predominance of funding already comes from the towns and the ta, the property taxes, uh, some of these revisions could really put further pinch on our community that we, you know, we are already receiving essentially the minimum type of aid that you can get from the state. And so to take that minimum and bring it down further would definitely have an impact for our budget and would put a bigger portion of the burden of our school system, uh, on property taxes. So I'm just putting that out there to the, one of the things that is being discussed on an ongoing basis, it's kind of into spend mode, even though the comment period's open. Uh, and then just moving along, um, you know, there's another formula thing just related to the fact that enrollment does drive chapter seventy. I mean, if you see a big impact in homeschooling that could happen, um, with COVID, um, then that could impact, uh, the amount of, uh, chapter seventy eight that we do get. So, um, that's that. Regional transportation, that gets paid out twice a year and the first payment doesn't happen until December and it's a reimbursement that comes after, um, the fiscal twenty, the last fiscal year, uh, uh, financial updates to the Department of Ed are submitted. Those tend to go in in October and November. And so, um, I think there's, the state's kind of doing a big wait and see on what they're going to do for regional transportation. Um, it's much smaller for us than chapter seventy. It's about, I would say about, uh, maybe eight percent of the size of chapter seventy, but it's still a, a number that could create deficit if it gets cut. Um, and so I think that's something we are watching and waiting for. So again, just a little bit more uncertainty. And then school choice typically, um, I'd say similar size, a little bit bigger than regional transportation due to trying to manage how many kids we have space for, especially if we're going into, um, hybrid mode, uh, and knowing that we are facing a lot of budget uncertainty. We didn't replace the graduating students, which were twelve in prior years, we typically did. Um, so, um, that could have an impact or will have an impact on the reimbursement we give them in the school choice program. So I know I'm not giving very specific numbers here and there's a reason, it's because we don't really have them from the state, um, because the state is kind of in a treading water kind of, um, framework. But, um, these are the big inputs into our budget from a revenue standpoint that we're watching. Uh, for now, I would say big picture, the summary of which is if we do get level, uh, funding from chapter seventy, that's good news. Some of the other items would be smaller, uh, but potentially impactful. So, next slide, thank you. So COVID costs and COVID, uh, revenue. You know, the CARES Act, which is the Corona Response Act, that was the federal legislation to provide stimulus funding, um, is, uh, currently estimated to provide just over 400,000 to the regional school district. Uh, our spending is, is definitely going to be greater than that. This is not the first time we've talked about the fact that the spending is going to exceed that funding. There is an opportunity for FEMA reimbursement for potentially, uh, particularly for things like PPE and HVAC. Unfortunately, um, at the federal level, you're hearing, uh, I would say more lowering of expectations of what they will reimburse. We should know that within the coming, um, probably four weeks. Um, and so, uh, whereas seventy-five percent of PPE and HVAC were the types of things we are hearing initially from them, we're hearing, uh, it may not be quite that great. And so really, if you give you a look at the first two lines and you see the differential between spending, um, and the CARES Act funds, you, we already know that this could be a hit to reserves. Think factoring in what we could get from FEMA, I would say for now, a hundred to $200,000 potential hit, um, to reserves, uh, could be likely. Of course, as Pam mentioned earlier, uh, it remains to be seen what will happen in the coming, um, months if new federal stimulus will be, um, approved. I think we all know that there's been a lot of, um, stalemate at the federal level, unfortunately, which is really too bad, especially when it's, um, combined with an encouragement to get back into the buildings. But, um, I think it's something that's being actively discussed and, um, we're going to hope that, um, the folks in Washington are going to do what they can to support, uh, the efforts that we're putting here, uh, in, to kind of keep education running as smoothly as we can. Um, and then staffing, we've talked about it quite a bit. I mean, that's, I put that below the line because these are costs that we may start to incur. We know that the need is there. As Pam mentions, those positions are still open. So, um, you know, to give you a sense, you could estimate maybe about $85,000 per month at the K through five level for subs, additional aids and assistance, uh, people, you know, bus monitors, all those types of things, um, to fill in for staff that may not be able to be present. So those are pretty big numbers. Uh, we just don't know exactly how that's going to unfold. So that's why it's, I, I would say when we look at the potential hit to reserves, which we'll continue to talk about as I go through the next slides, I would just keep that in mind as the big unknown. Moving along. All right, so reserve funds. Uh, we currently have 2.75 million, uh, in reserves that's unassigned and available. Now, that excludes, uh, $970,000 that's been sent to the, our stabilization fund. We have three, for those who may not remember, we have three major reserve buckets. One is the school choice fund, which in recent years has been very stable, uh, because we tend to spend what we get in on an annual basis and leave the balance mostly unchecked, sorry, unchanged. Um, but if, in, in, there was a period of time where we were receiving far more students, um, uh, than we are now and we were able to accrue some multi-year savings there. Um, so, um, that's one, school choice. The other is, uh, what's known as E and D, excess and deficiency, any money that might be left over at the end of the year. And, um, the last one is the stabilization, which is a separate fund where we can transfer reserves into and is typically dedicated for facility improvement, capital needs, anything you might otherwise need to borrow for if you're trying to avoid borrowing from things that might be, um, maybe expensive one time, but not necessarily so significant that you want to, uh, issue long-term debt for, which we currently reserve just for building projects like, uh, the middle school, high school, new building, now 10 years old, and the, uh, Memorial Elementary School and hopefully soon, um, some type of, uh, significant update to Essex Elementary. So, uh, again, the 2.75 excludes that amount of money. For those who may not remember, that close to a million dollars in stabilization has been coming from interest income that we've been receiving on bond proceeds related to the Memorial School project. And the notion being that because we got that money and from a capital source, we're trying to keep it for capital needs and I'll show you in a second, um, why we think that makes sense. Uh, we also have down below $335,000 devoted to the current fiscal twenty-one budget year as a revenue source to fund an operating budget gap. Um, I think people who have been watching our budget presentations for many years know that we have made a strategic decision prior to this year and to a smaller extent the year before, to really avoid using reserves as a annual revenue source. It's not really best practice. You want to have a balanced budget without having to dip into one-time money to support recurring costs. And our operating budget is recurring costs, putting COVID aside. Uh, but, um, we've also had a, um, simultaneous issue happening with multiple budget cycles where we've had to tighten the program and the budget each year to the point where, you know, we really didn't have other places to tighten and we were feeling, uh, after many years of doing that and cutting and not replacing retiring staff, for example, that we really didn't feel it was in the best interest of the program to continue to do that. And so as a result, um, uh, that's why, uh, we felt with the fiscal twenty-one budget, it was time to put some of that money in, especially when we were faced with potential revenue shortfall that I talked about previously at the state and federal level. So that's 335,000, it's not in the 2.75 million number. So the 2.75 is after all these things on this page. So the 2.75 is after all these things on this page, uh, the first two items are considered. Now deducting from the 2.75 million, we do have the 100 to $200,000 potential COVID hit that could happen, and we still have kind of an unknown around staffing, which could add to that, um, rather significantly. So, um, with a number like 2.75, I think you could say, well, um, it doesn't seem to be too concerning, but I'm going to show you in two slides, the multi-year implications of what happens when you continue to go through your reserves, which is why we really, um, until this past year, stopped using them as a revenue source for the operating budget. So let's move forward. Let's just stick here with the capital needs. We presented this in the winter of 2020. And you can see here, these are some of the major capital items that we identified. And you can see the bottom line price tag of close to, you know, $2 million. So the stabilization balance that we have now, while it's very generous, um, is really only about half of what we might need if we were to do everything on this page. And, you know, uh, districts always have to make a balancing act of how much do you defer, um, investing in capital to fund your operations? But it's certainly not best practice and we want to make sure that our buildings stand the test of time, especially ones that we, um, have recently gone to taxpayers and told them, um, how important it is for us to get their support. We need to take care of those buildings. And similarly at Essex Elementary, that's a building that needs to be invested in just to make it until Memorial School Project can be finished. Because as we may remember, we can't get state aid from the MAPS School Building Authority to fund a new capital project, uh, for example, a school building project at Essex in a few years until the Memorial School Project is done. So we know we have costs on this page just to keep that building, uh, running. And, uh, the middle school, high school is already about 10 years old. So, um, these are needs that we've talked about previously. And so this is one reason why I feel like the million dollars in stabilization really needs to stay there, um, and should not be, um, used to, you know, uh, to the extent that we can for either operating or COVID costs. So if we could keep moving, um, and I'm happy to take questions when we wrap up. This is, um, a look at something we put in every year's budget presentations. It's a lot of numbers. That's kind of the frame of mind I tend to operate in. So I'm going to try to bring this to a very basic level. What this is a multi-year budget, it shows up in our budget presentation. It basically is a way for us to look here, and I don't know if you can see my cursor moving at the spending line and marrying it with revenues down below. And what we do is we look at, you know, sustainable growth spending in the three, mid-three percent increases per year. That's what we've seen historically, some years higher, some years lower. And what is the funding that's going to take to support that, uh, if we have a balanced budget? And you can see in fiscal 21, we have the 335,000 I talked about. We had zero in fiscal 19 and several years, no reserves were used to support the budget going back all the way to fiscal 16. And we had that first 100,000 of fiscal 20 that I talked about, that small amount. But what tends to happen is because state aid grows much less than our spending and because the other revenue sources grow much less than our spending, to keep the assessment to towns within the levy limit, um, you need to have your other revenue sources growing at the same rate of spending. And so just to stay even, you can see what happens to reserves over time. It could easily grow, you know, at about 50 to $60,000 per year in order to generate the types of percentage increases to the town assessments that we know, um, are within the limits of, uh, of what can be afforded without a, an override. So if you just summed up, um, the four years from now after the current year, which is already, uh, baked, um, these numbers alone is 1.9 million dollars. So, um, going back to the fact that we have 2.7 million of available funds, um, you deduct the 1.9 million, you can see what a dramatic hit that would be to our reserve funds. And that doesn't even count the current one to $200,000 that we know is probably going to go to COVID unless there's new stimulus coming through, um, and potential additional costs for staffing. So, uh, a lot of numbers, a lot of presentation. I'll take questions, but before I do, just to summarize, we have an uncertain revenue picture with the current fiscal 21 budget at the state level. Two, uh, we have reserves that are starting in a good place, but we have already put some funding into the current year operating budget at 335,000 that if, uh, not adjusted in some other way in the future, will start to make a dramatic change to our, our picture. We have facility needs that we can't ignore, um, even if right now they may not be the most important thing in the current year, they're going to be very soon. Um, and the COVID costs that we have are already in excess of what we're getting from the federal level. So we know that there's going to be some hit to reserves unless there's new fresh stimulus just from this year alone. And some of the things that we're talking about around staffing could make that, uh, a little bit more impactful. So, uh, talked for a bit. I'll stop right there and happy to take any questions.
Uh, Vi, I have a question for you. On the multi-year budget slide, and thank you for doing this. This, um, really puts everything kind of into crystal clear perspective. So, um, the 1.9 million dollar potential usage over the next four years, is that just rolling forward the 335 and not including the possible hit, the 100 to 200,000, and obviously not including the staff hit? That's just the 335 rolled over for four years?
Correct. That's just the operating deficit increasing at a rate to keep our program whole and, uh, keeping assessments within the levy limit. Correct.
So following up on Shannon's question, is, do, should we think about COVID, staffings, hybrid expense as almost like a stabilization expenditure? It's a one-time expenditure. It doesn't, it doesn't roll over, um, like that line that we have down, you know, midway, right?
So I think there's a, I would agree with half of what you're saying and maybe challenge the half I will agree with. And if it sounds non-committal, it's not intended to be. I agree that it is one-time in nature.
Yeah.
And reserves are best used for items that are one-time in nature. And this chart here on the multi-year budget is talking about recurring costs.
Yeah.
The flip side is that, you know, our building, uh, and facilities are assets that have useful lives of anywhere from 30 to 50 years, really 50 years if you look at the MSBA, um, expectations. So money that we spend into those facilities are really intended, they have multi-year benefits, whereas, you know, what we spend on the hybrid model really is to keep us running in the current year for an unknown period of time. And I know we've talked in the past about this, this uncertainty that comes with how long things can last if you're kind of going back and forth between hybrid and having to flex back to remote due to circumstances that could be beyond our control.
Yeah, and, um, I have a couple of other questions about this. The monitors and the bus, can those go on the transportation line or that is always going to be personnel? Can personnel ever fall on the transportation line?
For what, are you talking about?
The bus monitors? Yeah.
I don't believe. You can transfer from another line to fund the personnel line, but they're going to live on the personnel line.
So you can't just, uh, okay. I'm just trying to find, I'm trying to find ways to milk this. What is E and D for the year? Like have we certified that? And I mean, the, the free, like free cash, have we done that yet?
It's not certified yet, um, but I did, um, trying to pull up my own notes. I think what we were, we talked a lot at the end of, um, the school year last year about some of the changes that would happen. We were estimating about, uh, after doing some, so we were estimating a net savings of about $235,000 at the end of last year.
Yeah.
Of which that already included, um, sorry, that was after we did some investments. We knew we had some technology investments that we were making at the end of the year due to remote operations in the spring and getting ready for remote operations for, um, for the fall. It also, um, that 235 was also after we increased some of our prepayments for, um, uh, out-of-district special education tuitions, which is one of the things the Department of Ed allows you to do. And so we did that as well. And, um, so, and then on top of it, we will get, um, the, the $1 million of stabilization assumes that the fiscal 20 last year, interest income that we got of about 480,000. It will flow through E and D, so E and D will look very big, but just like this year, once it's certified, we're going to immediately amend the budget to send it to stabilization. So that's $969,000 assumes that we follow through the plan that we've discussed many times of transferring last year's interest income into stabilization.
Okay. And then I just have one final question about, um, can you go back to the multi-year budget? And at, at what point do we trigger, um, a change in our credit rating? So just so everyone knows, you know, we are hoping to work on the Essex Elementary School in seven or eight years, maybe, maybe longer, but I hope it's within seven to eight years. So, uh, we want to make sure that we're in a good borrowing position. But I just wondered if you could speak to at what point do we start risking that credit rating is on the spending line?
So, yeah, I would say right now, you know, there's no number. Uh, I can tell you when we borrowed, uh, $35 million, um, to fund the Memorial School Project. And then we did also, um, over the past few months, we refinanced some of the middle school, high school debt, take advantage of lower rates. We, um, do go and speak, we get interviewed by credit rating agencies. We're currently AA plus with standard and cores. That was upgraded a few years ago in large part because of our reserve, um, performance and our positive budget management and, you know, multi-year budget forecasting. One of the things that they continue to ask for is policies on how we're going to use reserves over multiple years so we don't run into a situation where they potentially get hit in a very short period of time, kind of like what we're talking about. So I would say that if this multi-year budget comes to pass this way, I think you could definitely expect the rating agencies to talk about it. And, um, it's not something that they would be happy. Now, of course, you know, running our school system is first and foremost priority. But having said that, you know, good financial practice is part of making sure that whatever we do now, which may be very important, is also sustainable. So it's really about balancing sustainability. You know, we, we will be borrowing more money probably, um, within about nine months for the Memorial Project. So I think we're going to have some very real-time, uh, answers to your question. But I think, I think this is definitely going to be a question. And I can also tell you that they did ask about COVID costs in the last rating agency, uh, credit review. So, uh, I would say we're going to, this will be an, this will be an impact in the current year. I don't expect, our, our credit rating is currently stable and I don't expect it to be downgraded necessarily. But I think spending reserves, as we're talking about doing, will certainly trigger the conversations and I would expect it to have some impact if we don't come up with some, uh, a sustainable solution.
Avi, can I ask a quick question? I think I know the answer, but I just want to make sure, uh, we're on the same page. Our total spending growth percentage increase, just as, I think you said it, but I may have missed it, assumes level services, not any of the deferred improvements that we've been seeking to make over the past few years?
Correct. This is a level services budget. And that's what we tend to do with the multi-year budget, uh, on the notion that we, uh, if we want to increase something in our spending, we typically have tried to find some other savings in the budget to make that happen. It's been, um, extremely rare that we have added in program additions without funding them ourselves instead of asking the, to my mind, I don't think we've ever gone about prop two and a half to do enhancements with the one time that there was a revenue adjustment back in fiscal 16, which is primarily to avoid using reserves. There were some additional positions that were added at that time, but they were reinstatement of preference.
So if we were going to look at a project, you know, if we were going to maybe come to the towns for a correction or a, an override, 24? I mean, I'm just trying to see when we could, we can't keep spending out of reserves like that. We're going to have problems with program. We're going to be cutting program to get there.
It's almost too early to tell because we don't know the full impact of this year.
Yeah.
Or the, or the duration of our current state. We're assuming one year. Let's hope it's one year.
I mean, I think the good news on the, um, on the investments we've made so far for COVID, a lot of them are items that have helped us to get ready in a way that I think we should be good. I think the big known is the staffing. That would be something that certainly be recurring, um, if, if we were in this mode for longer. And just as a reminder, um, we're going to be entering budget season for fiscal 22 in about a month and a half, so.
Something to look forward to.
I guess I wouldn't take 23 off the table until we know the full impact.
Yeah.
Of where we're at.
Okay.
Because it's not for deep discussion tonight, but I think I've always tried to keep my eye on where we, where will we be after this and what will the work look like in terms of our necessary staffing and structure to try to put, I'm assuming there's, I'm assuming there's a level of putting some things back together and getting back on track. So that may be a wrong assumption. So I don't think I would take 23 off the table just yet.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, it's, it's, it is, you know, it is what it is.
More questions for Avi?
So I, I have a question is, are you guys going to recommend, um, an expenditure or a dollar amount for us to use for a hybrid? Or how are we going to talk about this?
So I think I would try to think about capping staffing at $300,000 if possible.
And that's. And that's a one-time expenditure, we think.
We think.
Okay.
And that would be inclusive of the TAs, the monitors, um, the building subs. I think the unknown is what we deal with each year, which is any type of, uh, leave coverage. I don't, I can't quite project and it may not be discretionary depending on the type of leave that it is, as that would be in any year.
Pam, is that 300 grand include the middle school and high school too? Is that just for K, uh, K5?
At this point, I'm looking at K5.
Okay.
Again, I would cap it at that, but also recognize that our ability to staff up to that level may not be what we think it is. And I'd say that's about 50% of our intended investment originally, of our intended original investment.
Um, okay. Any other questions about the budget?
I just have, I, I have one question about how do we want to watch this? So we're, we're, you know, we're, we're proposing an expenditure and I just wondered how do you want to talk about this? Like, do we want to revisit our budget once a month? Like, how do you think, or is that too much? Like, I'm, I'm.
Like to Avi's point, in about four weeks, we're going to, less than four weeks, we're going to be in this every meeting.
Yeah.
So staffing's an easy thing for us to track because it's added heads, lost heads. So we can always be giving, um, a ballpark. You know, we may not have it down to the exact, uh, salary expenditure, but we'll be able to know how many people we're pulling on. As I mentioned, just our hiring alone for TAs, we are, um, trying to fill, 50% of the positions we're trying to fill right now are, um, either, uh, positions vacant by reassignment, resignation or retirement. So there's available funding for those roles.
Yeah.
We'll just keep, you know, from the, from the outset, the, the estimated cost was just a way to try to keep track of what the potential spend could be. Not to, not to cripple us, not to stop us from forward progress, but just a disclosure. So I think if we continue to disclose where we're at, what we're seeing, at least we won't have surprises. The goal is to avoid surprises.
So do you want a motion from one of us, Sarah, about the, the proposed 300,000 for hybrid expenses or hybrid costs?
Sure.
Is that what you need, Pam and Avi?
Does that combine with a motion to move into the hybrid? Or are we just talking budget right now?
Just budget right now.
Okay.
A motion to, to approve 300,000 for hybrid personnel costs?
Yeah.
I would say, if I can just clarify the language, that we should say to be spent from reserves, because that's where it's coming from from now, and we do need that to be part of the vote.
Gail, did you get that?
And you could, while I'm amending, and I apologize for kind of, I don't typically get involved in the language, but to be from reserves pending other available reimbursements that may materialize, which would obviously be a preferred source over reserves if we do get more.
Okay. So, want me to restate that motion? So, motion to approve 300,000 for COVID personnel expenditures to come from reserve funds should other aid not materialize? Is that fair, Avi?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
I'll second that. Ken?
10 seconds. Okay, is Eric back on by chance? I think Eric had to leave for an emergency.
Did you want to discuss that motion at all? Does anyone have any questions about that motion?
I think you're pretty straightforward, Annie.
I mean, yeah, I, I think it makes sense. I, we need to, we need to get some of those kids in front of their teachers, and we need to not completely break our budget. So let's go with this for now, and if we need to revisit, we will do what we need to do. Any other discussion? That was my mumbles. Okay. I believe Eric is not on the line anymore. Shannon?
I vote yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Ken, it was your, Ken, did you second?
Yep, I seconded.
Teresa? Is, she's actually, she, I believe she was having a problem with her computer, and I'm a yes, but I think that's enough of a quorum.
I think Teresa said she, her computer died, but she was a yes. So I don't know if that can be official, but she's, she got kicked off.
I think we're okay. Okay, so good. So now we have some, which is good. And we can have some more discussion if we would like on the hybrid situation. So does anybody want, anybody on school committee want to discuss more about the hybrid situation? Does somebody want to make a motion, and then we can discuss the motion?
I can make a motion if we would like to do that.
Sure.
So.
We're getting a lot of feedback from somebody's computer, and I don't know what's happening, but if everybody could please mute if you're not speaking, that would be awesome.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Annie.
Yeah. I move that we authorize the superintendent to implement a graduated hybrid learning model at the elementary level for as long as health and safety, educational programs, staffing, and budgetary conditions are met.
I will second that.
I'd add subject to negotiations, Annie.
Okay. I'm going to, I'm going to send this to Gail, so she has it. If I can spell negotiations, there we go. So who seconded?
I did, Shannon.
Okay, discussion. I'll have some discussion. I think, I've always said that I thought it was going to be the hardest for the K-2 kids, and I think that they need to get in front of their teachers and make eye contact with each other and have a little time. And I know it's not going to be as much as most people would like, but I think that whatever we can do is a good step forward for, for those guys. And I know that our teachers, administrators, and principals and Julie are working really hard to try to figure out the way that it's going to work best for our students. And I, I think even though it's been painful for a lot of people, and I know it's been really hard on a lot of families, I think it is actually good that we started in remote so that we can work out some of these kinks and figure out some of the scheduling issues now, so that as we move in, we can move in in a stronger. Anybody else? All right. So I guess we will take the, on the big authorization to, oh, okay. Annie?
Yes, I'm sorry. What, what am I, I'm saying yes, right?
You're saying yes, because you made the motion.
Yeah.
Shannon?
I seconded the motion, so yes, I'm, yeah.
Matt?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, so, so great, there we have it. We can now hopefully take some steps forward into moving into hybrid for the K-2 students starting as soon as October 19th, if we are able to get there. That would be awesome.
Great, thank you very much.
Yeah. Okay, but before we move on, there's something that I feel that I very quickly need to revisit, even though I don't really care to. But the chat was open for a while, and it came up a little bit about the six-foot distancing. And so we voted back in August, and there was some discussion at our, I believe, mid-August meeting on the six-foot distancing. I don't personally think anything has changed since that meeting. Does anybody else wish to discuss six-foot distancing any further at this time?
I don't.
Not at all.
All right. Okay. So, you know, I think if conditions change a lot in Massachusetts, if our numbers overall as a state get phenomenal as things move forward and things change, obviously, this is a very fluid situation with COVID, with the virus. We don't really know what's happening. Some people think it's getting better, some people think it's getting worse, people think it's a hoax. So we'll see what happens. But right now, I don't think we're going to be revisiting the six-foot distancing guidelines. Okay, so, moving forward. I believe that's it for the, all the exciting news that people were mostly here to hear about. And I think next we're going to be talking about our school committee and superintendent goals. So maybe people want to stay on for that, or, I don't know. But thanks to everybody who's joined us at the meeting tonight. It's really exciting to have 240 people on the call.
Sarah, I've never seen that many people walk out on you that quickly.
It happens, it happens.
It feels like we're going back in time to when we'd be lucky to see one person every six months.
Okey dokey. Oh, okay, so I will just, yeah. Okay, let's just move forward. School committee goals, do you want to put those up? Do we have them?
I'm, I'm grabbing them right now. Yep.
You're the best.
School committee goals, where are you?
I had a couple grammatical changes. Should I just send them to Gail?
Yeah.
I think Annie was managing the goals.
Okay. Are you throwing, are you throwing the grammatical errors at me?
I didn't mean it that way. I absolutely did not mean it that way.
Thank you. If I'm looking for a job as an editor, I guess I just lost that. Thanks, Pam. So.
I so didn't mean it that way.
Yeah, that's okay, Pam. It's all right. Yeah, it's that Green's text, right, Shannon? Yeah, it's messy. Facilities related areas, maybe if you hyphenated those two, those three words, in order to maintain educational parity.
Yep, that's exactly what I was.
Right.
You read my mind, yep.
I know that Gail is listening, and she is also an editing guru, so we will work that out with her. But I think if you hyphenated those and added in, in order to make, maintain. And then you need a semicolon after the paren, the playground parentheses.
I might even just put technology, security, and playground after key facilities related, after related areas.
Okay.
But what, let's just talk about the meat of it rather than the, the veggies.
Yeah, so usually you go for an agreement in concept and then let the editors wordsmith it to the point that you feel comfortable with it as a document.
So the first one is good, I think. Is everyone good with the number for the first one?
Yeah.
I think the second one is good.
Can I ask a total newbie question?
Yes.
How, how do we assess these and when do we assess these? Just procedurally? Or are these just generally things we're sort of hoping to, like a mission statement more than assessable goals?
We had discussed maybe revisiting them once a quarter, was it, last year? Annie, did we talk about maybe looking at this once a quarter and just making?
Yeah, I mean, we check in with it, and it always comes up during budget, too, right? We always say, well, what are, what are our goals? And so it's kind of like a thing that you kind of, you, you apply it when you have to make decisions, right?
It's a touch point.
Yeah.
Okay. Because like the targeting resources, that's, that's pretty, I mean, it's not like specific measurable goals type of things, like it's more, more a guiding principle?
Yeah. So you just did that. You just voted to, to allocate 300,000 for a specific thing, right?
Okay.
I think the third one needs some wordsmithing, but I think that that's a good one, too. I think that's.
That's part to go first.
I don't care what the order is, because.
I was mostly just teasing, as long as it's.
Yeah. Is everyone comfortable with that, the three there? The third one?
Yeah, I think, I, sometimes I forget. I mean, I, I think that people forget that the school's not done, because the classroom wing is, but they still need to build the next chunk.
Yeah. And we need to make sure that it's on time and on budget, which it is.
Yes.
And then the other thing is the parity between Essex Elementary and Memorial School, which we just saw in our budget, reflected in our budget priorities.
Yeah, I think a lot of these, to help Teresa, because I know this is her first time through, a lot of these do end up as guideposts to how you utilize your budget authority, your policy authority, and your program authority. And they, they kind of set the path for the year.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And the last one is kind of, it's frustrating, because I think we were all excited about doing this work, and we just seem to have not been able to do anything on that. So I'm wondering.
No, 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 because that group is up, it's starting.
Good. I'm glad. I want us to do the work we committed to, too, though.
Okay, so the STAR group is starting, and I think that, I think we just need to keep something about it on there.
Oh, I think we should keep it. I just want to do the work.
I thought we had a plan in place that we were just waiting for the high school. I think Trish was going to be leading out on when they can actually wrap their head around having meetings, but Policy Subcommittee is on board with, with doing that work in there as well. Is that right, Sarah?
Trish, and Trish had just reached out to the student group, and they're trying to find a time, and I think they're going to start meeting with their U blocks, and I think Mr. Macarelli is going to be the head advisor, so it sounds like it's getting up and running, so that's great. Yeah.
Yep, you're right on, Sarah.
And, but I think I agree with Annie. We need to make sure that we're doing the work, so the Policy Committee will be on it, and we need to do some work, too. I really wish we could have had our retreat, and maybe at some point later in the year, if things calm down a little bit, we can have like a half-day retreat or a training for the school committee or something on the half. I think that would be really.
Yeah.
Sarah, I think that ties to my goals, too, and wanting to try to get the strategic plan, planning process back on track. Because the culminating activity this summer was, this past summer was supposed to be our retreat as a joint effort between school committee, media leadership, school leadership in a public forum to talk about the findings from the spring public forums on development of the strategic plan. This would actually fit right in with it as well. So I like the idea of maybe planning something either in the winter, when, you know, we may be all hunkered down, and it could be a virtual environment, or in the spring when we could actually get together.
Yeah, or both.
Or both.
Yeah.
So I know that there was a question that came up from somebody about curriculum, and I wonder, you know, curriculum is not our bailiwick, it's the administration's, but is there anything that we want to say here about that? Pam, do you think there's anything missing?
I think we talked about that last time. We were putting these together, and we mentioned curriculum, but then we said we weren't going to put it on there, because it's not our lane.
I guess, I'm, I'm trying to think it through, what is, which is, what is, what have you identified as a shortcoming of the program that you would want us to focus on for time, energy, resources, and develop curriculum to address? That's how I think I would do it from the committee level, which is, what's the, what's the problem we're trying to solve? But what's the area that you are seeing as a deficiency?
I'm, I am not. I am.
Okay. You know, in the past, we've had the social emotional goal, which has kind of, on the implementation side, created a curriculum development. So I think even when we think about curriculum, we, we look at our assessments, we look at our third-party reviews, and then we identify the area that may need to be targeted for improvement, revision, or development based on an identified need. So if there's an identified need, then I think we could attack it that way. I would say that you're finally, your, your last bullet is, has curriculum implications to it.
Yeah. I feel like we're not going to have a lot of time to do anything more than these things. But as I've said before, you know, I would like to get back to some regular order where we do some of the other stuff that we're responsible for, like checking in on curriculum and departments and all of that stuff that we, we, you know, normally do. So it doesn't have to be here, but it would be great to start scheduling some of that in our meetings.
Yeah.
Okay. So do you want a first read on this, Sarah, or what do you want?
Well, I feel like we kind of had a first read on it, didn't we? Because we had all these last week. I know Jake really wanted them to be available more to the public, because they didn't make it on, so maybe they need to be up for another round until our next meeting before we So maybe they need to be up for another round until our next meeting before we adopt them?
Yep, they should be, they should be up. That was.
Yeah, that was Jake. Everything.
I think we can adjust as we go, having had a first read.
I would too, but you know, to pay attention to our public, I believe that if we need to have them up for another round, that's fine.
So how about if I work with Gail to tinker with those, the editorial bits, check it with Shannon? And then we'll give it to Pam to post tomorrow. How's that?
Okay, I'll send the grammar police over too.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you for working on those, everybody.
So do we need to officially do a first read or is that just, we just did a first read and we're good?
We're good with a first read and we can, we can adopt them next time and we'll see if anybody else wants to weigh in.
Perfect.
That's continued to see them over Zoom, Annie.
Oh, sorry.
I'll try to make quick work of this, because these should be somewhat familiar to you, because they're, they are in part left over from last year. But also I think translate to a little bit of the conversation that Annie was having about trying to get back to some semblance of our routine work. So I've essentially carried them forward and kind of targeted them as two-year goals, because it feels like we lost basically all of March through September, just focusing on how to manage the crisis. And that was one of my questions for you, which is, school committee is carrying a COVID goal. If you feel it is important that I include one, I could and I would structure it similar to how the memorial goals have been structured, the memorial project goals have been structured in the past, because it's more of a management issue than it is kind of stating a target of something we're seeking to achieve. So very quickly, what we're, what I think needs to carry forward to this year is the labor management relations, big umbrella, which is obviously something we are working on, I would say, almost on a daily basis. We're communicating two and three times a week just to manage through all of the components of COVID. But we also have a side issue that has been deferred a couple of times now, which is the development of the teacher's assistant contract. And I do think it's important for us to try to accomplish that before the end of this year. Because before you know it, we're going to be looking at beginning the process for the next, the next teacher contract. I believe the contract's up in 21, so halfway through next year, we'll need to begin that process again. And I think it would be helpful for us to have the teachers, the teachers assistant contract in place going into the end part of our budget season. So I'm seeking to carry that goal forward for the year. It does impact a significant number of people in the district. And then on the student learning or district improvement goals, we, we accomplished some of what was laid out last year. But the piece that I think absolutely needs to be addressed this year, because we're no longer tethered to a, a current district plan, is to create the strategic plan, which is going to lay out a framework for the next 10 years, serve as the guide for the creation of three-year district goals and then school improvement goals. The longer we go without this, the more scattered we will become in our planning. So I'm looking to put some energy into this as soon as possible. I have a proposed timeline on here. And it does involve kind of public work and the school committee as well to get the feedback. So this is, this is going to be on all of our agendas to accomplish between now and the end of the year. Let me look very quickly. I have every intention of trying remotely to get the District Health and Wellness Committee up and running again. We started a bit last year, but didn't get to, we were just getting going when everything hit. But I think that's, that's a place where we could do quite a bit of work around social emotional work. And I think it also ties back to your efforts and the community efforts that we're going to undertake with the anti-racism initiative. Ruler, I think we're a little stalled on the, on the Phase Four rollout until we are back. We are a little bit more back on track with our curriculum instruction and knowing a little bit more what our day-to-day looks like. But it sits here as a goal to revisit. And then, you know, it is never, I wish I could take it off the list every year, but I think budget this year is going to be very challenging. Initial reports out is that 22 is going to look worse than 21. Who knows? We were really panicked going into the summer. We still don't have a budget, so we don't know what the reality is yet. We don't know what all of our funding sources are going to look like. But there's early predictions that the deficits for next year are quite significant. And we know that there's a lot to rebuild and there's going to be a lot to triage if we are lucky to get back to a normal schedule or the new version of a normal schedule next year. So I anticipate this will take us a good amount of time to get through. So that's kind of the game plan of what I'd like to work on in addition to COVID over the next 10 months. Sarah, go ahead.
I was going to say, I just wanted to point out the irony of the Health and Wellness Committee trying to get up and going during COVID. There's just one thing that I wanted to add and it's not in our goals and I don't know if it would fit into your goals or maybe if it's something for the strategic plan, but I don't see in any of our stuff, there's a lot about social emotional health, health and wellness. And there's a lot about the anti-racism, anti-bi curriculum, but there's nothing about LGBTQ kids. And I think I would like to see directly, I would like to see that directly addressed somewhere. So I don't know where it best fits. But I know that we have a lot of those kids and I want to make sure that that's part of it.
I think we need to assume it's a part of the anti-racism, social justice work and maybe just be more explicit in there. And it is absolutely a part of the FCL work. So I think more explicit language is probably the way to address it.
Okay.
Other than a completely separate goal.
All right.
Yep. If people are comfortable with that.
I'm comfortable with that. Everybody gets to sleep at the Leo.
No, I'm still awaking with you and I'm comfortable with that.
I got plenty more questions. Don't worry.
Okay.
The night is still.
Well, on that one, the last question, I'm comfortable with that, although we did have specific things that we committed to about the anti-racism stuff too. So maybe with the more explicit language, as long as we don't lose that in it.
I specifically didn't suggest sticking it in with that goal in our school committee, because I want that to have its own space. But I think they both need to be addressed, even though there's a lot of crossover issues.
Yeah.
Two situations.
So do you want to fold that into our goals or?
I mean, I'd like to do, I'd like to do both, but I don't want to be all pushy in our goals. I mean, maybe.
What is it we want to do?
I want to make sure that all of our children are feeling accepted and safe and comfortable and like they can use all the bathrooms and, you know, do everything they need to do at school.
I would, this is Pam's personal recommendation, I wouldn't parse any of that into any one group over another. I would roll them together and identify it as an inclusion goal. And maybe, maybe develop more the goal we have around the social justice and inclusion and anti-racism. Because I think if it's not inclusive, it becomes exclusive and targeted at one particular group. And I don't know if that serves the purpose of inclusion, but that's just my take on it and it's, the hour is late.
The hour is late.
I like, I like your idea on that Pam. I think that's good. And I think there's a lot that we've put on goals and I think as somebody who was observing earlier, at least from the school committee goals, we had prioritized the number one that we spent the least talk, the least time talking about it as a goal and the most time in the meeting, obviously, managing through the COVID. So there, I think we need to keep some of these general and definitely keep them prioritized. Sorry, I'm not adding much, but more just saying.
And it's late, so you can give these some thought. I mean, again, my biggest question was, should there just be either even a statement upfront? Or is it just understood that the primary work this year is, we're going to get on any one of these tracks with the best intention, but we don't know, we just simply don't know what's coming at us. And I absolutely hope, I would be tickled if my work was, you know, going to the World Cafe and hearing about the aspirational goals of where we want this district to be. We just don't, I mean, I could see us planning it and then pulling up to it and having a mini crisis that derails it again. But hopefully not, you know, we're going to be optimistic.
Pam, in answer to your question, I, I don't think it should be a goal, but I think it's worthy of mentioning at the top, because it, all of the other goals that got pushed out refer to that.
Okay.
So I think it should be a specific goal, but.
Kind of a disclaimer at the beginning that.
Yeah.
COVID is really going to drive the work and the schedule this year, but these are the aspirations of the, because these are planning goals. These are getting some things accomplished to set the district up for its long-term work. Okay, I have a sense of where to go with it. Thank you. That was helpful. All right. Anything else? I think we're up to school committee comment.
We got some stuff done tonight.
We did.
I have a comment. It's Teresa. Actually, it's a question. Can you hear?
Before it, yes.
Pam, this is a question for you. And it's a carryover from my comment from last time too. Our school councils meeting yet, or like, I know in the past, they've generally started in the, in the October timeframe. But do you get a sense from principals that that's work that's getting underway yet or not quite so much?
It's on the list, but it's not underway yet.
Okay. Will word be going out for, okay.
Yeah, we're going to, I think we're bumped out about three and a half weeks from every, the way things typically fall out.
Got it. Thank you.
Yep.
I have one comment, which is Pam, Avi, all the teachers, all the staff at MERC. I just want to express my thanks that everybody is pulling forward together in this. Just even as we've kind of looked at, geez, could we have done more over the summer or different things? I really think this effort has been scaling very well from just the planning over the course of the summer with smaller groups through to the rollout across the district. And I just want to thank everybody for being kind, being patient, giving it their best and staying persistent through it. This gives me faith that we're going to, we will be able to deliver education and support our students throughout the year. But thanks, everyone.
Ditto.
Yeah.
It's a team effort, for sure. School committee included in that.
A quick question about next meeting or subsequent meetings. When can we talk about the Essex Elementary School Playground? And I know that we, Avi, we had talked to Brendan about the Green Grant, but that we, we didn't need to do anything about that until next year, right?
I'd like to talk about the Essex Elementary School Playground as soon as possible. I missed the comments.
Yeah, I apologize. So Green Grant, that is something that we're going to be kicking off this winter, per Brendan Zubrick's suggestion. We're very excited. That would take a big item off of the capital list. It's also something that has benefits just as we continue to manage updated HVAC. So, and then for playground, that was the other question.
Yeah.
I will turn that question back to you. I mean, we have the money earmarked, it's in the goals. I'm glad that the money stayed there and I continue to get inquiries from CompHans about, you know, let us know when you're ready. And so I know we've wanted to get through kind of opening school and seeing what's going on as well as timeline. So maybe that's something we can revisit as part of the budget process. As everyone remembers, it was something that was going to be slated, to be implemented in the, you know, right after construction season, reopens after the coming winter into spring. So we're still able to make good on that timeline. So maybe once we kind of get through some of the budget stuff, if there are other questions the school committee wants to answer or if you feel like that commitment is done, you know, we can get moving. I really put that one back to you.
I just want to work backwards from when we would start, because I know we're ordering from Europe and just want to make sure that we were gonna.
Annie, you read my mind. Maybe we can prep up for the 11th, re-meeting to have the, like the timeline of when decisions need to be made.
Okay, great.
In order, have the order placed and everything fall into the timeline that we needed to.
Yeah. And just one other thing, sorry, this is Essex related. We had talked at collaboration about, we had signed a one-year lease extension. And the town of Essex has some questions about the lease agreement. So I know that I had committed to making some meetings, setting up some meetings that I have not, have not done that work yet. So I gotta, I'm going to circle back with you, Avi and Shannon and Pam and see what I need to do to get that moving. Because I know that they wanted to have that done sooner rather than later.
Okay.
Okay, sorry about that.
No, a question about the upcoming schedule. We meet today, we meet on the 20th, which will potentially be the first week that some of the kids are in school, which is super exciting. And then the next meeting should be October 2nd, which is also a, a big election. Are we meeting that day on Election Day?
That's our schedule.
I do not want to meet on Election Night.
Let's not. It will give us something to do before things are known.
No.
Yeah, there won't be anything else to do, like.
I want to meet on the calendar.
Third. I want to be. It's going to throw us off, but.
I think we should.
Nothing's going to be decided on Election Night anyway. It's just going to be all just hanging out there in the air until they count everything for weeks and weeks.
We have typically met on Election Nights. I don't know if we, every committee meeting has been scheduled. The first week in November has been scheduled on Election Night, but we typically do.
We leave at five o'clock.
I think we, oh, we could, maybe we could go early.
Yeah, I, I do not want to be talking about this stuff past seven.
Same with me.
Annie, you can also be excused. It's okay.
No. Ken will miss my questions.
I enjoyed the dialogue between Annie and Avi and I'm looking forward to that update on the COVID budget. That is.
I'm also going to work with Avi on his graphics.
So can we agree to move that meeting to the, on November 3rd to five o'clock?
I'm fine with that.
Right with that? And we'll discuss the COVID? Sorry, I couldn't resist.
Yeah.
So moving it to five o'clock on the, okay.
And can it be a very tight agenda, like what we need to talk about?
I'll do my best. You mean no additional public comment in the middle?
No.
That was a special situation.
I don't think anyone's going to want to come and everyone's going to be watching what's going on. All right.
So for our planning purposes, we'll, we'll plan to put it at five o'clock. Keep it on that Tuesday. And, you know, we can revisit it next meeting in case something comes up.
It is 2020, so I'm sure something will.
Who knows?
You are kidding.
Murder hornets or typhoon.
The aliens.
All right. Can I make a motion to adjourn? Or is it too early for that?
Second.
All in favor?
Second.
Aye, aye.
Yes.
Good night. Thank you, everybody. Good night.
Thank you.